Want to call one county board of county commissioners. Today's Thursday, August seventh, twenty twenty five, nine o'clock a.m. Board of Commissioners convenes as the boards members of the Board of County Commissioners also serve as the liquor board. Central line vector control district board, Mason Valley mosquito abatement district board, Walker River weed controlled district board. Well, a quick general improvement district board, the Silver Springs general improvement district board. And during this meeting may convene as any of those boards as indicated on this or separately posted agenda. This meeting may break between eleven thirty and one thirty for lunch. All Commissioners are present. Commissioner Cassinelli is on Zoom. The invitation is going to be given by John Downstone of Joy Church, followed by Commissioner Hendricks with the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Good morning, Commissioners. I can't see myself on video, so I'm not sure that I'm displaying. Well, Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to join. We thank you for that you've actually imbued our governing documents with the principles of individual liberty and orderly citizen government. We thank you for the awesome privilege it is to serve our citizens and taxpayers of Lyon County. I ask your wisdom, your guidance, your blessing upon this meeting. And as our children and faculty and staff return to our schools and we get busy for the fall season. I ask your divine protection and guidance over all of our families and our school personnel. And finally, Father, I do ask that in this, what's shaping up to be a pretty tough fire season. We ask your divine protection over the within the boundaries of our county and protect our people and their properties. Lord, we pray your abundance and we thank you for this privilege. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
This is just a public participation. I'm actually taking on any item until it's properly agendized. It is anticipated the public participation participation will be held at this time, though it may be returned to at any time during the agenda. Citizens wishing to speak during public participation are asked to state their name for the record and will be limited to three minutes. The board will conduct public comment after discussion on each agenda action item, but before the board takes any action. So if you if you have public comment on something on the agenda, please wait till that that time.
Jim DeChambeau, once again, I'm here to ask you to do something to control the traffic on Osborne Lane. Either speed bumps or signs or something to slow the people down.
Any more comment? And I don't see any online. So we're on the possible action review and adoption of the agenda. Can we talk today?
A request from the Smith Valley Park Board to pull item nineteen A at this time and they'll get it on the agenda later.
Is there any other requests? Entertain a motion.
Ken Keller, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda. Pulling nineteen A.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Jacobson, second by Commissioner Hockaday. Any public comment? Seeing none in the room. Any online? Seeing none. Those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Brings us to six A. For presentation only, recognize Lyon County Human Services Case Manager for Children's Service, Misty Crank for outstanding efforts in organizing organizing and execution of events for child abuse prevention month.
Good morning, Dr. Shayla Holmes, Director, Lyon County Human Services for the record. I want to take a moment to recognize someone whose dedication and passion made a profound impact during this year's Child Abuse Prevention Month. Misty Crank, Lyon County Human Services Case Manager in the Children's Services Division. From the early planning stages to event wrap up, Misty brought vision, heart, and an unwavering commitment to raising awareness and supporting children and families in our community. They coordinated with community partners, planned activities, and ensured that every detail from outreach materials to event logistics aligned with the mission of prevention, protection, and hope. Because of Misty's leadership on this project, we were able to engage more community members than we have in past years. And more importantly, amplify the message that every child deserves to grow up safe, supported, and loved. So we wanted to take a moment to recognize Misty Crank, if you could scan it for me, please. And I'll have a certificate for you to sign before you leave today.
Thank you. Will we do any pictures for that or?
We certainly could. I'm up for.
I'll promote it.
You can see that because that means you got it come out. Donna, would you like to be in this picture too? What about Christie? You sure? Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Moving to number seven A, time certain, for presentation only legislative update from Asensio and Ken Gray. Is he online?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
And, okay, I guess you guys don't have the video feed because it's not letting me turn it on. Hey, good morning, everybody. It's great to be back in front of this board again. I had planned on just doing a an overview of the session. As all of you or most of you may know, a little little bit has changed since the end of the session. So first I will cover the what did happen in the session. This session, we had one thousand two hundred and ten BDRs that were presented, six hundred and twenty-three out of the Assembly, and five hundred and twenty-nine out of the Senate. My comment on that is I think we've got way, way too many bill drafts to be considered. Everybody says, well, we need more time. I don't think we need more time. We just need to reduce the number of bill drafts and make sure that there are actually legislation that will benefit Nevada as a whole. Out of those twelve hundred and ten, six hundred and six went to the governor. He signed five hundred and nineteen of them, eighty-seven of them were vetoed, and fifty-four eligible to return next session. In the past couple of days, talk has picked up about having a special session in the fall. The topics that are being bannered about at this point are the Governor's Crime Safety Bill, which is absolutely worthy of being heard. Don't know if it should be put off till next session or we should have a special session. The cost of a special session, as you guys know, is is pretty exorbitant and you know, unfortunately, it was one of those bills that didn't make the constitutional deadline and we'll we'll see what happens from there. John, do you have a question?
No. No. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm driving in a in a truck, so.
No, it's okay. I will let you know. No, no worries, John. Hey, if you guys, if any of the Commissioners or County Manager has a question, please feel free to interrupt me. I I like interactive. I don't like preaching. But yeah, there were a number of bills that they're talking about bringing back in a special session to discuss. One of the ones that is causing me more consternation than anything is the film tax credit bill for the Summerland Studios down in Southern Nevada. Just having been through the presentations and seen what's being offered and what our potential return on our investment is as Nevadans. I don't think it's going to be a good deal for Nevada. So just wanted to throw that out there. So Andrew, you guys could watch, you know, put that on your radar and just see where see how that transpires. A couple of bills that I worked on this session that I think are really good, and this is something that the DA and I both have really shared and have a heart for is, you know, foster homes in Nevada. One of the things that were brought to our attention was that foster home foster parents, potential foster parents in Nevada, if they had ever had a minor drug conviction for marijuana, they were automatically and summarily dismissed from even being able to apply as a foster parent. Time has moved on in Nevada, you know, things have changed. So what we what we did is I worked across aisle with a counterpart, realizing that we do need these foster homes because kids, if they can't find a foster home in their community. So they're not only yanked away from their parents, they're yanked away from their communities, their schools, everything. It adds trauma on top of trauma. So we took a look at what the the feds were doing and we came up with a bill that said, okay, we're not excusing the conviction. What we want to do is have a time period, you know, like cooling down time period. And the number that came up with initially was seven years. The feds, they had us look at five years, so we're filing it with five years. If you had a drug drug conviction that's five years or older for marijuana. What we're saying now is you are not summarily dismissed from, you know, being able to to file an application to be a foster parent. You will be allowed to go through the entire process like anybody else. So this doesn't mean you're going to be a foster parent, but you're allowed at least allowed to apply, go through the home checks, go through the background investigation, normal criminal investigation, all the things anybody else applying would do. So hopefully this will add, you know, maybe one or two foster parents in our county, you know, maybe ten or fifteen in Clark County. But it's not just the the number that counts. That one number may represent potentially ten placements. So if we added two in Lyon County that, you know, that met the criteria, that could be potentially up to twenty placements in our county, which is a huge jump in where we are now. So I think that's rather important. A second bill I worked on across the aisle with Senator Camasaro on was presumptive eligibility for Medicaid. I'm not about expanding Medicaid eligibility. And one thing I wanted to make sure first was that this did not extend, you know, have a an impact on the counties or on the Medicaid budget. This money was already budgeted. So what happens is when a child is born with certain conditions or it's premature, you know, any number of things that, you know, would automatically except for doing the application, make them eligible for Medicaid. This is going to say they are they are presumptively approved for it at this point. Problem is, a lot of parents were making the decision themselves that, no, we make too much money, or, you know, we're not going to qualify, or worse, they didn't know they could be eligible. Nobody had ever talked to them about it, or they found out after the fact, after the deadline had cut. There are a lot of parents, we heard from a couple of parents. And I think the most heartbreaking one is is the parents of an infant that had died. They were, you know, at his bedside round the clock. The child made it for nine months. But now, instead of being able to look back and cherish those times, they've always got the specter of medical bills hanging over their head because they didn't fill out the paperwork in time. So they're get they, you know, they're reminded of their child's death every single time that phone rings and there's a creditor on the line wanting money, or they open their mail and there's a bill that's passed due. And so they were, you know, these people would have been eligible to receive these funds had they had they had the information and applied within the timeframe. So, you know, I think that will do, you know, the average Nevadaan, you know, some good. And especially out in the rurals where, you know, a lot of our folks don't know about these these programs that are typically in the urban areas. So I, you know, I really, that one really meant a lot to me. I mean, you know, as most of you guys know, kids, kids get to my heart and they tug at my heartstrings and I think we should do everything we can to give them the opportunity to get a good start in life. That being said, the last thing I need to say is it has been my absolute pleasure serving our county and our district as your assemblyman. It's been my honor. I've loved it. As you know, I am I am resigning, stepping down from the position to take a different position back in DC. It breaks my heart to do this and I'm fighting against the fighting against the thought that I, you know, I'm abandoning abandoning my constituents and my communities, but I'm not. I'm going back and I'm hoping to be able to serve my veteran community more than more than I'm able to in this position. It's going to be probably one to three years. I'll be back. I'm maintaining my Nevada residency. As I'm telling folks, I'm taking a detour. I'm not leaving. Family's staying here and I'll be I'll be going back and forth. But I have loved every single minute of working on behalf of, you know, specifically our county and our district, but as our state as a whole. And with that, I will open it up to any questions you might have.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
Just to, this is Rob Jacobson, Ken, just wishing you well and congratulations and you'll do great things for the veterans on a national level. So thank you for that.
Thanks, Rob.
Same thing. Ken, appreciate all you went for the county and for the your district. So thanks and good luck back in DC.
Thank you, Dave. And if you ever need anything, especially on the veteran side, please give me a holler.
Roger that.
And Ken, I'll know what they said. I know you've contributed a lot to this county and other counties at the Assembly level, and we wish you the best.
Thank you. And again, I'm not going away. I'm just taking a detour. I'll be back. This is this is my home state and I love it with my whole heart.
Yeah, no, and this is John online and yeah, just echoing what the other Commissioner said. We appreciate everything you do and glad to see you're going to continue helping veterans. Appreciate it.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, Ken. Congratulations, I guess, is in order, but I know how Washington DC is. It'd be nice to have another contact up there. Sam Brown got confirmed, and so now we have two from the region that we'll be able to talk to.
Again, thank you, guys, and reach out anytime you have, you know, questions, comments, or concerns, or you think there might be any kind of a chance I can help you with anything going on back there at all. Andrew, thank you for setting this up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
All right, that is. All I've got, Scott, thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to seven B. Time certainly nine o'clock a.m. for possible action. Recommended courses action to the State Engineer in regards to the application nine four three five six, nine four three five seven, nine four three five eight, nine four three five nine, followed by the City of Fernley on April twenty ninth, twenty twenty five, to propose to change the point of diversion place of use and manner of use on a portion of existing permit eight oh one eight four from an underground source located in Lyon County, Nevada, to a new point of diversion and place of use in Churchill County, Nevada.
Check out, this is Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager. Jennifer from MB Energy is on, and I know that she has a presentation regarding this.
Hi, good afternoon. Good morning. Thank you, everyone, members of the board, staff, and members of the public. My name is Jennifer Shawhin, and for the record, my address is seventy-one fifty-five South Lindell Road, Las Vegas, Nevada. I'm here today on behalf of MB Energy to respectfully request your support for water change applications that will assist the construction of the Sierra Solar and Battery Project in Churchill County. In accordance with NRS five thirty-three, three sixty-three, the State Engineer requires that these change applications be presented at a public meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. While the Board's recommendation is advisory and not binding, it plays an important role in informing the State Engineer's decision. I'm requesting your recommendation to support for this permit as approval will enable the continued use of water within Churchill County to facilitate this important renewable energy project. The Sierra Solar and Battery Project will bring substantial benefits to the county, including enabling the development of up to four hundred megawatts of clean energy and battery storage, strengthening local grid reliability by delivering power close to demand centers, supporting business growth and long-term economic development, creating local jobs and generating new tax revenue, and enhancing infrastructure that benefits the community as a whole. In order to avoid delay in submitting documentation to the State Engineer, I respectfully request that the clerk provide a letter summarizing the Board's final recommendation at the conclusion of today's meeting, rather than waiting for the approved minutes. Thank you for your time and consideration. I'm happy to answer any questions the board or public may have on this.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public?
Yeah, my question is, does this have anything to do with the battery that's going out on Pinrose? Has nothing to do with that at all.
It's up in firmly.
Up in firmly, so this has nothing to do with what's going out on Pinrose?
No.
I believe it's if you drive east on eighty, well, more north, but it's right there at Nightingale.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that it was, they're not adding to it.
Jim DeChambeau, so we're transferring water out of Lyon County to Churchill County from an underground source? I'm against that. We have we have enough problems with water in Lyon County without giving it to somebody else.
I agree. Thank you, Doctor.
Any other comments? So I have a question on these water rights that are going to be applied to that. Are they senior water rights or are they junior?
They're senior water rights. They're held by the City of Fernley.
Is there a reason why they couldn't have used senior water rights?
The basin that is being utilized is a very restricted basin with very limited water rights within that basin.
That's my point. The City of Fernley is giving up their their senior rights to a different diversion point.
It's a temporary, two-year use for the for the water, though. And
So so on a temporary use, how long is temporary?
Two, two years.
Two years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager, just to provide some additional clarification on there. I believe that the City of Fernley is leasing these water rights to MB Energy for the construction of the project. And that's what it's for, for the temporary use. This application was before the board last year as well. However, they're only good for a year. So that's why the board is seeing it again. There's not a renewal process, is my understanding. It has to go through the same process.
So it's just a lease and then they'll they just need it for the construction, so they're going to pump it out there at the at the site. That's the reason for the the whole thing.
That is my understanding. It's changing the place of diversion. And Jennifer can correct me if I'm wrong on many of those facts.
No, those are those are correct. Thank you. It was in front of the board about a year ago for the first year's application was the board decides to take no action. You have the option to take an action, approve, or not approve as your recommendation to the State Engineer.
Hey, we've had public comment. Bring it back to the board.
Yes, I think again.
No, no.
No, why is he?
Nope.
Sounds like, it sounds to me like people are against City of Fernley using their water for how they feel fit. I struggle with that a little bit. I have water rights, whether I use it to water my chickens or my land. Seems like it's my business. City of Fernley owns these water rights. Why aren't they able to do what they want with those? So I think we need to take a look at the slippery slope that we're arguing about. I don't know.
Well, in my opinion, it's it's a lease, so they're going to be, they're not getting rid of their water right. It's a lease. So it's a revenue thing for the for the City of Fernley. And we all know what it's like to get revenue to provide services. And then it'll come back into the into the City of Fernley. So it's just, they're going to be pumping way out there, so it's not going to drop the water table. It's not going to hurt anything, so I'm all I'm on board with it.
Right, they can't. They can't use more than what they have. They can't. So it's not like they're stealing from anybody. It's their water rights.
Right. So I'll entertain a motion.
Ken Keller, I'll make a motion to recommend to approve the action of the State Engineer in regards to applications nine four three five six, nine four three five seven, nine four three five eight, and nine four three five nine filed by the City of Fernley on April twenty ninth, two thousand twenty five. Post change the point of diversion place use and manner of the use of portion existing permit eight zero one eight four from an underground source located in Lyon County, Nevada, to a new point of diversion and place of use in Churchill County, Nevada.
A second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Jacobson, second by Commissioner Hendricks. Those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you, staff and board and public.
Seven C, time certain nine o'clock a.m. Public hearing bill twenty-five oh four for possible action, approving ordinance amending Lyon County Code Title fifteen, Chapter two thirty-nine, Section one, Section two, and Section five. They're thereby adopting the twenty twenty-four ICC Building Codes, twenty twenty-three National Electric Code, twenty twenty-four Uniform Building Code, twenty twenty-four Uniform Plumbing Code, twenty twenty-four Northern Nevada ICC Amendments, and the twenty twenty-four Lyon County Amendments effective January first, twenty twenty-six, and other matters properly related thereto. Mr. Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Gavin Henderson, Lyon County Community Development Director, for the record. As always, the ordinance was proposed, so we can go through the presentation again. There were some staff recommended changes, and then there was a board comment that we wanted to have a little bit more discussion on, as we did propose some language and wanted to see where the board wanted to go related to that topic. So I'll ask the board, we can go through the presentation again.
Reviewing the changes would probably suffice for me, but whatever the flavor is, I've got all day.
I agree.
Okay.
Okay, we'll just go with the changes.
I think it's slide twenty seven. Back. So there were some staff recommended recommended changes. This one was specifically in the board packet in the backup. So there was a board comment related to increasing the frost depth at certain elevations. So we, as staff, took it took a stab at amending table R three oh one point two, which shall be amended to set the minimum frost lined up eighteen inches for elevations less than five thousand feet and twenty-four inches for elevations greater than or equal to five thousand feet. The justification for this, so at our pretty much, I would say, probably ninety percent of the county is below that five thousand foot threshold. At that five thousand foot threshold, the snow load increases from ten pounds per square foot to thirty pounds per square foot, which obviously we can assume that indicates higher chances for snowfall. uh, which obviously we can assume that indicates higher, um, chances for snowfall, colder along the winter, winter temperatures. And then at that greater elevation, there's also lower average soil temperatures. Uh, so with that, um, staff can reasonably justify the change, um, increasing that, uh, frost line to twenty-four inches for elevations at five thousand feet and be.
Could you, uh, kind of tell everybody what, what, uh, communities that kind of affects?
So that would be Silver City, um, the northern part of Mountain House, uh, which right now is just an ag, ag up there. Uh, it might touch a little bit of Mark Twain going up to the story county line, um, but those are pretty much, and then anything built on, um, you know, the side of a mountain or at kind of those higher elevation hills, uh, within Lyon County. So, um, it's pretty isolated, um, where this, this change would apply.
And would that affect any of the industrial center leaving Silver Springs?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then on the next slide, this is, uh, what staff wanted to have a little bit more discussion with the board. So there was a a board comment, um, that, uh, cause right now the way the amendment A is proposed, we would require receptacle outlets, um, in peninsula and island countertops. Um, right now, the way code is currently written in the twenty twenty-four codes, it says when they're installed that the standards apply. Um, so we, as staff took, wanted to amend it so they would be required. And this was, in our opinion, a, a safety thing just to eliminate, um, extension cords being ran from the wall outlets to the islands, um, thinking about kids walking around, um, those clients sitting on the countertops, et cetera. Um, the board comment specifically pertain to peninsula countertops. Um, so in order to hopefully resolve that comment, staff wanted to introduce an amendment, um, that would require, that would allow receptive outlets that shall not be required within peninsula countertops measuring less than six feet in length as measured from the connecting wall. So from the walls essentially to the end of the, um, countertop of the peninsula island. Uh, we also wanted to keep in there that all those future wiring provisions. Um, so we're talking about any exposed wiring outlets capped off, anything underneath the islands. Um, those will be prohibitive. Um, cause obviously our number one concern or number one reason for household fires in Lyon County is unpermitted wiring and those connections. So we wanted to eliminate that completely if that kind of stays, stays true with the way amendment A was proposed currently. Um, I did put some options as far as what the board, um, may or may not discuss. Um, a lot of these are kind of dictating if the board wishes to approve it. Um, so number one, the board may choose to keep the language in the ordinance as proposed, um, requiring outlets in island and peninsula countertops. Um, number two, the board may accept the proposed changes and, uh, read them into the record. Um, and that's the changes highlighted in green. So we would eliminate peninsula in amendment A and then introduce a new amendment, um, specific to peninsula countertops. The board may also propose unique language or amend, um, what's not shown on the screen, um, and, or we can eliminate amendment A completely and just keep to what the codes currently say, which just says when they're installed, you know, the standards apply, therefore giving, um, builders the option to put them in or not.
I will make a comment that, uh, cause I, I'm the one that kind of pushes forward. All your, uh, appliances are six-foot cords. That's what they come with. That's why when you look on a wall, you have, uh, a receptacle and then within twelve feet, you have another receptacle. So all your lamps and everything is six foot. That's why the six foot in length was there. And then by doing that, then you don't have a plug on the end to where the, the power cord comes up over the edge because mostly it's a children issue that they come in and with mom or someone cooking in the, in the kitchen, they'll grab those cords because they're accessible. So that's the only reason why I pointed that out. Is that all?
That's it. That's all the changes, um, that, uh, changed since last meeting, um, the ordinance was proposed, um. Look at that. Well, we're here to answer any further questions or, um, take direction on, uh, this item specifically related to the, the code adoption.
Any comments?
Nope.
Any public comment? I can't see online, so. Hey, see nobody online? I entertain a motion.
Public comment? No public comment there? Didn't see any?
Nope, no public comment.
Okay, I'll move to approve an ordinance amending Lyon County Code Title fifteen, Chapter two thirty-nine, Section one, Section two, and Section five, thereby adopting the twenty twenty-four ICC Building Codes, twenty twenty-three National Electric Code, twenty twenty-four Uniform Mechanical Code, twenty twenty-four Uniform Plumbing Code, twenty twenty-four Northern Nevada ICC Amendments, and twenty twenty-four Lyon County Amendments effective January first, twenty twenty-six, and other matters properly related to thereto.
And, uh, I may ask, commi- commissioners, um, is this the way the ordinance is currently proposed, or is this what staff recommended changes? I mean, it's a little convoluted because we have stack recommended changes. We have a proposed change that was not in, in the backup, um, I guess as far as getting a key of the motion.
As presented today with amendments.
I have a second.
Second.
Uh, motion by Commissioner Hawkeye Day, second by Commissioner Hendricks. Those in favor say aye. Think that was an aye.
Aye, yeah.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you.
Hey, we got ten minutes before our next time certain. How long, how long do you think that will be? Hey, that one's going to be a, a little bit of a presentation, so I'm going to go ahead and break right now and then come back to that time certain so that we can have the time that it needs. Be back at nine forty-five.
Number twenty-one C, third right now because of time constraints. Do you think we can calm it down a little bit? If you have anything to discuss, please take it out in the hall. Okay, twenty-one C for possible action, approving the local agreement with the city of Yarrington in Lyon County for the city of Yarrington to conduct Yarrington Municipal Court's court proceeding in the Walker River Justice Court courtroom beginning September twenty twenty-five. Who's presenting this?
Good morning, Commissioners, Brandy Jensen, Yarrington Municipal Court Judge. I just wanted to appear and show our appreciation for the collaborative effort and the partnership to utilize funds and efficiently use taxpayer money and say how much we appreciate it.
Do we have any comments or questions?
Nope.
Any public comment? Saying none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve an interlocal agreement with the city of Yarrington in Lyon County for the city of Yarrington to conduct Yarrington Municipal Courts court proceedings in the Ri- Walker River Justice Court courtroom beginning September twenty twenty-five.
Second, we have a motion by Commissioner Hawkeye Day, second by Commissioner Jacobson. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. You do public or?
Yeah.
Yeah, aye.
Motion passes five zero. Go back to our time certain. Time certain for nine forty-five AM for possible action to adopt the twenty twenty-five Carson River Flood Plane Management Plan as a planning level document to guide floodplain watershed coordination and regional inflammation efforts within the walk, the Carson River watershed.
Yes, thank you. Hello, everyone. My name is Lindsay Marsh. I work for Carson Water Subconservancy District, and I'm out here today to talk to you guys about the update to the Carson River Flood Plane Management Plan. Um, in this presentation, I'll discuss the background goals and objectives and the strategies of this plan. Every picture in this presentation is examples of flooding in our watershed. Obviously, this is Lyon County in nineteen ninety-seven and two thousand and six, so we're no stranger to flooding here. Uh, since June, we've been bringing this plan to each county's planning committee, um, per request from the county staff and its executive boards to request for adoption. This plan is updated every five years and we just completed this most recent update, so I will cover, cover those updates later on in this presentation. So the main purpose of this plan is to have a guiding document that reduces flood risk in the watershed. Um, it reinforces the idea of thinking about water before you build and restricting development in floodplains or luvial fans for the safety of the community. The first rendition of the plan is in two thousand and eight, um, when it was identified as a need through the Carson River Coalition. Um, it, the initial document was funded by the Nevada Department of Environmental Protection and has expanded over time with the help and guidance of the CRC. Next. So the CRC is a watershed-wide stakeholder group that serves, uh, as a steering committee for the integrated watershed planning process. The idea of the CRC was created in nineteen ninety-eight after the nineteen ninety-seven floods. Um, and participants in the CRC include private individuals, staff from local, state, and federal agencies, tribal governments, and citizen-driven groups. I think we also have quite a few, uh, nonprofit organizations as well. CWSD was asked to facilitate the CRC, um, in nineteen ninety-eight and established integrated, integrated watershed planning process. These working groups, they're split into working groups for the Carson River Coalition. These working groups are agricultural producers working group and base to species working group. And the one that really helped drive the, um, update of this plan was the floodplain management working group. So we had a lot of people help with this. Um, it was initially funded, um, by N-DUP through three nineteen grant, but it's also set to change since there's no funding allocated to three nineteen in the coming fiscal year. So, some plan history, next slide please. Plan history, as I said, um, the first one was created in two thousand and eight. It was adopted by all five count, well, five counties. And then in two thousand and eighteen, it was adopted by all six counties in the watershed. Uh, this Carson River Flood Plane Management Plan contains suggested actions. It documents county's progress on those suggested actions. It outlines future projects for FEMA CTP funding. For those of you who don't know, uh, CTP funding is cooperated technical partner funding through FEMA, um, where we partner with, uh, CWSD with FEMA to work with local county staff to see what they need and assist them as best as we can. Um, this serves as a guideline for floodplain management in our watershed, and this plan led us to get FEMA funding. So since its initial plan, I think we've gotten over six million dollars in federal funding through this. Uh, the Carson River Flood Plane Management Plan is referenced in Hazard Mitigation Plans, the Lyon County Hazard Mitigation Plan, City Master Plans, and also Carson River Master Plans. Next slide, please. So as I said, even though we live in a high desert, river and alluvial fan flooding is nothing new to the Carson River watershed. As you can see in these pictures, we've had many, many floods throughout the years. Um, it provides the historical flood dates and some historical photos. So the more we think about water and water before it floods, the better prepared we can be before it does. Um, and flooding is becoming a larger problem due to increased development pressure in our floodplain areas, our alluvial fan areas, and from elevated roadways and housing paths, like putting bricks in a bathtub. The more bricks you put in, what higher the water gets. And this causes our natural flooding rates to change and decrease our natural floodplain function. Next slide, please. And then this here is just years of major flooding in recent history. Um, you can go next, please. And a little more. Thank you. So as you can see, water likes to go where it wants to go. Rivers like to meander. Uh, they don't respect political boundaries. Um, so this plan provides regional approach to floodplain management. Uh, it provides information on how to protect floodplains from future development using a common sense approach and advises ways to avoid slash reduce flooding impacts on a watershed, watershed wide scale. The plan objective starts by using the living river approach. You can forward the slide, please. One more. Thank you. It encompasses everything we do. It improves the watershed health by recognizing the importance of balancing the river's natural floodplain form and function, and then with various uses of land to reduce flood impacts and damages. Um, flood, protecting the flood pain makes a lot of sense, um, fiscally. And, and our ecosystem's health is the same because the building National Institute of Science has been found that one dollar spent on flood mitigation saves the community six dollars overall. So it makes fiscal sense to create that open space, let the water meander, and then therefore keeping our community safe and our buildings from damage. Next slide, please. This is actually, go back one. I just thought this was a really pretty picture. This is from a midnight float going down the Carson River. Um, we have a lot of navigable waterways. This is one of them, and this was, um, taken by Brenda Hunt, one of my coworkers. So if you guys haven't been out on the Carson River, I highly suggest it. Next slide, please. And this is just the Carson River Coalition, main message to protect the floodplain from future development, um, with that living river approach in mind. We don't want to be like LA, uh, putting a concrete channel while our rivers are. Next, please. This is a nice little picture over at the Carson City DMV, um, where you can see a lot of, uh, stormwater has accumulated over time. So this plan includes eight mitigation strategies. Number one, protecting natural flood pain function and values, set higher regulatory standards, collecting flood data and maintenance information, balancing channel migration and bank erosion monitoring, increasing the floodplain and flood hazard outreach and education, reduce infrastructure impact, map luvials and study fans, and minimize stormwater impacts. Uh, your staff helped us develop these actions and has been implementing projects in your county to help residents keep safe and, um, also doing quite a bit of outreach as well. Uh, as county commission members, you're in a unique position to make sure the suggested actions are considered when reviewing development proposals. Next slide, please. So stated in the agenda letter, there are several changes and additions to the table of contents and consistency throughout the document. We updated the document formatting, uh, edited the plan for accuracy and reading ease. Um, we added a new section, the pathways to overcome barriers to mitigation. This would came to our attention through working with every county's emergency managers. We realized that there was a way to partner up with our local emergency managers and actually find ways to overcome barriers of mitigation. There's a lot, staff, time, people. There's a lot of different things that if we work together, we can overcome. Uh, we added two sections, three point one two and four point eight, expanding the stormwater section to include low-impact development suggestions. Um, and we added an additional suggested actions to protect and buffer national, uh, natural gene and choice. We just updated the appendix to reflect the new projects and the new mapping. That's warm. This was taken in Carson City, um, one of Brenda Hunt, again, one of my coworkers, went to go see a movie one night and came out to see the car absolutely loaded with debris. Um, this actually came down from a luvial fan from a detention base and that wasn't sized correctly. So it was really interesting how you could go to a movie and come out and all of a sudden in ten minutes, your car can be buried in three feet of sediment. Again, I just wanted to thank your staff who participated in this update. Um, they provided info, edited pertinent sections. Um, and this plan was made to benefit your county efforts to reduce flood risk. CWSD encourages the use of its information and planning processes. As Churchill County has adopted pre- previous versions, we are asking you to adopt or recommend for adoption this twenty twenty-five person over floodplain management plan and implement suggested actions. Since floods don't respect political boundaries, let's work together so that when something happens, nothing happens from the headwaters to the terminus of our watershed. Next slide. And that's all I have. Thank you guys very much.
You have any questions on board? Any comments? I did have a, did I catch your last name right?
Marsh.
Flood pain mitigation and.
It works very well together.
Yes. So, uh, I know there was a bill that just passed Congress, uh, it, well, through the House. It's going through the Senate right now that, uh, they're changing the FEMA, uh, to where you can get mitigation grants instead of applying afterwards. You can start doing that. And are you addressing that in this plan?
Uh, not in this plan specifically. We are only mentioning CTP funding in this plan. However, CWSD does keep a pulse on all FEMA funding. Um, we do work closely with Taylor Anderson, um, to, and, and we do work with counties on that. CTP funding allows us as a third-party agency to be able to give money on behalf. Um, but we do as, act as a partner for other hazard mitigation grants, so we don't actively look for those.
Cause I know it was bipartisan, so it looks like it's going to sail through. So try and solve the problems before you flood. And so that would be very helpful in the future. Any, uh, comment from the public? Yeah, I'll bring it back to the board for production.
I'm going to adopt the twenty twenty-five Carson River, River Flood Plane Management Plan as a planning level document to guide floodplain management, watershed coordination, and regional inflammation efforts within the Carson River watershed.
Second, I have a motion by Commissioner Hendricks. I'll go ahead and give Casonelli the second.
That's fine. Go ahead.
Get him on record. Those in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes five zero. Thank you. Okay, number eight, Commissioners, County Managers Reports. Start with, uh, the left, Mr. Jacobson.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, to, uh, the girls' club fundraiser, um, I think they raised about hundred and ten to hundred and twenty thousand. Um, I, I, I think, I mean, in, when I'm the founder of those and goes club board, um, as I think the, one Yarrington, uh, feel the impact as well. As I think the one Yarrington, uh, feel the impact as well for affordable daycare. And, uh, I just, I truly do support the boys and girls club and, and, uh, the safe place in which they can, uh, host, uh, these kids on a daily basis, take them, uh, to various, um, field trip type opportunities. So I just want to give a plug for that again. Um, attended friendly chamber commerce quarterly luncheon. Um, I was. Um, very energetic and upbeat. Um, listened in on a presentation by Victory Logistics and Mark Four Capital, um, and their current and future plans, um, currently is exploding. It's. Cool, that's it. Little spooky, um, but. It is. Right on the corridor of I eighty rail. And it's booming. Um, tend to friendly city council meeting. Um, last night, uh, not really a whole lot on the agenda. Um, and then, uh, I did spend a week in Florida with my family and, uh, I am glad to be back in northern Nevada. I, uh, I do, I do love our state and, and where we're located. That's all I am.
Enjoy the humidity. I sweat a little bit, I'm not gonna lie. I'm gonna go online real quick, uh, John Cassinelli.
Uh, thank you, Chair Keller. Um, attended the Dayton Valley Conservation District Board meeting. And, uh, they will be having. The annual barbecue coming up in September. Uh, I'll be sure to pass that date along when we finalize that. Uh, attended the mound house citizen advisory board meeting. And I attended a meeting with some representative land company with interests. In the area that, uh, regarding some of their concerns on the Aspen Creek, uh, ribs. And that's about all I got for this go around.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hendricks.
My report's going to be more focused on, uh, what we accomplished at the National NACO Conference in Philadelphia. And what, what the results of the work that we do on that, uh, in that organization has resulted in. Um, I've been working on the issue of industrial solar on public lands since I began serving on this board. When we attend national and state NACO events, this is a big part of what we focus on. We've worked with the NACO Director of Public Lands and the Director of the NACO Center for Public Lands. They will soon be meeting with the Department of the Interior to obtain more detailed and specific information about the impact of the latest federal legislation. To date, we've been successful in, um, getting county involvement in solar projects. And now we've also achieved revenue sharing. We will receive point nine seven five percent of their gross revenues. Um. However, they, they have also ended the tax incentives. So we're not sure how many more are going to be coming forward, but, um, definitely have made progress on that. And now we're kind of focusing on geothermal.
Commissioner Hockaday.
Uh, thank you, Chairman. Uh, attended the Mason Valley Conservation District here in Yarrington. I've discussed a lot of issues. As far as finances and projects, uh, also attended the Smith Valley Conservation District meeting with the, the same items for discussion. Um, looking at, uh, consolidation of the two conservation districts at this time, but, um, not quite sure how that's all going to work out financially. So it will be something we continue to work on. Uh, also attended the, uh, Nevada Association Counties Legislative Meeting. Unfortunately, after thirty minutes, I lost the link and tried several times, couldn't get back on. So watched it online, the videotape. Uh, Smith Valley Park Board and had a discussion about mosquito abatement for Smith Valley. And possibility of that being on the ballot in the future for, um, getting a program going there for spring mosquitoes. Senator Titus was there last night and discussed the issues. She also discussed issues from the legislative session. So we had a very good meeting there. Um, took the Pumpkin Hollow Underground Tour. Since we have a new, uh, company taking that over. Uh, and they will be trying to get established and up and operating in the next, uh, within the next year. Very interesting tour, uh, going two thousand feet down and. Especially in a tie, um, and cooked and sweated quite a bit that on that trip. Today they have the, uh, Walker River Irrigation District Meeting. Now they have it on the seventh of, uh, each month, and therefore I'm missing that meeting. So I apologize for missing that part of my job. And that's, uh, that's about all I did in the last couple of weeks.
Thank you, Commissioner Hockaday. So I, I too attended the friendly city council. I did notice that they have an emergency, uh, problem with their water. Uh, system that there's, I think it's like seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that they're trying to come up with to fix some problems there. And that just brought it back to me thinking about this board. Uh, I'd like to see an update on our maintenance that we talked about before. Uh, about, uh, maintenance at a water sewer and also on, uh, machinery and any machinery and our vehicles. Because I'd like to see an update that we're, we're keeping up on our maintenance because it looked like they probably didn't. Quite stay up with that.
Chair Kars, I mean, I, I believe the life expectancy of that. Uh, system that they're replacing is fifteen years and it's in the sixteenth year. So it sounds like they did not plan. To have that replaced is my, I don't know if preventative maintenance was the issue or just lack of the planning for the end of the life of that. Is that, am I, am I wrong in that?
I think there were some, they should have put eyes on some of that stuff because.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But it went to a point that they probably should have.
Right.
Eyes on.
Had that budgeted anyhow.
Yeah. Also, uh, I've been meeting with my contacts in Washington DC, both on the congressional side and with the White House. Met with, uh, James Salomeyer under Governor Lombardo, uh, just trying to get, uh, the contacts that I have up there, they, they allow me to, to know what's coming down the pipe way ahead of everybody else. So that I can share it with our staff and, and everything else that if like FEMA is doing something, we can, uh, get a heads up. So which is very helpful. One of the things that we worked on last go around was, uh, here's a few of the things that we worked on was the payment move taxes. Uh, key behavioral health and mental health programs. We, uh, are working on the developed community development program, CDPG, and home investment partnership program. Immersing management and public safety programs, which goes back to FEMA and the disaster thing. And also, uh, they're also putting a lot of direct investment into transportation and infrastructure. And we want to be there to, uh, see if any of that would help us out. Also attended the NACO, uh, legislative update with our, our, uh, mercy manager and in-house lobbyist, Taylor Allison, so she could probably talk about that later. And, uh, I also want to bring up the AI, uh, they're really working on AI. I'd like to see this county get AI, uh, before the year years out, really. Uh, I could use it quite often, uh, just to compare documents to see where everything is. And also get, when I'm talking to people, it would give me the chance to, uh, if they ask me a question, I could just go on there and get an update or a report to send to them quickly. And I think, uh, most people, they pace for itself within six weeks to two months. So I do want to have those discussions moving forward. I think that's all I got for right now, and we'll go on to the county manager.
Andrew Haskin, line county manager. So as usual, I've been pretty busy. I will just kind of go over some of the highlights. Um, so I met with waste management, uh, with the Community Development Director. Um, just to get an update from them, we try and do an annual meeting, at least annual, uh, meeting with them. To, um, talk about different issues and, and kind of see where they're at. And get an update on where we're at with the Silver Springs Transfer Station. Um, and so, um, I know they plan on making a presentation to this board, uh, in the near future. Uh, just to provide you guys an update, uh, um, sounds like the transfer station is on drive. So. Well, uh, I'll be looking forward to that. Um, now with the Public Utilities Commission, um, you'll remember I, I met with them previously. But this time we met with their staff and their attorneys, uh, to, it was kind of part of our due diligence. On the northern Nevada or the North Lyon County, um, power GID. Um, and so we're still working on that.
I had asked you about getting the calendar put together on that. Well, how's that going?
Um, so we're still kind of. We're working on it, yes. Uh, I will have something to you. Um, I hope to actually just have a presentation to you in the near future. Um, part of the challenge with the calendar is it's been kind of difficult to schedule with outside entities that we've had to, had to schedule with. Um, like the Public Utilities Commission. And so, uh, it, it changes a bit, uh, but I will, uh, I'll work on something, uh, getting you something here in the near future. Um, I too attended the Pumpkin Hollow Tour. That was really interesting. Um, I hadn't been out there. I, I think I'd done the surface tour before, but hadn't, uh, done the underground portion. It was really, really fascinating and looking forward to, um, something happening there. Um, also met with, uh, Nevada Division of Environmental Protection. And, um, again, regarding the capacity, uh, issue at Aspen Creek and, uh, signing of final maps in the Dayton area. Um, we currently are waiting on a, a sample to come back from the lab. Um, maybe may even be out already, um, that we'll be sending off to NDP probably, um, within the week, within this weekend. Um, and hopefully get some of that resolved. I know that's been a question on a lot of people's minds, so, um, we'll, uh, we'll see where that goes, but it was a very positive meeting. And, uh, I think that, uh, we're on the right path there. And then, uh, finally I had a meeting with, uh, county managers from Carson and Story. Um, we try and meet at least quarterly, uh, to talk about different issues that affect all of our counties. Usually Douglas is there, but they couldn't make it this time. So, um, we do, usually it's a kind of a quad county thing posted by NND. Um, where we, like I said, talk about what's, uh, what the different issues are that we're working on. Um, you know, we're all pretty different counties, but it is amazing to me how similar, uh, the challenges are. And so, um, it's always really good to kind of brainstorm and talk that through with, uh, other county managers to see how they're handling it. Well, happy to answer any questions.
I'd like to see that. That calendar.
All right, we'll get it to you.
I want to see progress moving out there. Hopefully we're not waiting on other entities that's Lyon County and just get some.
I, I promise we are making progress.
Thank you.
There were elected officials reports.
Chair Pope.
Morning, Lyon County Sheriff Brad Pope for the record. Sure, uh, many of you have seen, you know, in the local news lately. Uh, the Nevada has been named a sanctuary state. And, uh, our office has been inundated with phone calls, um, requesting the Lyon County Sheriff's Office policy on working with our federal partners. I don't know if you guys have been, uh, inundated with phone calls as well from your constituents. Um, I just want to say the Lyon County Sheriff's Office, uh, regardless of the presidential administration is in office is always cooperating with our federal partners, uh, to the full extent. Our, uh, policy has not changed. Uh, we're very aggressive with it. Uh, we sort of uphold the law and that's what we do. So just want to put that on record and let you guys know. If you're asked any questions about that, uh, specific policy that it has not changed. As a matter of fact, we, we just had Homeland Security, um, pick up a person, a validated gang member from our jail. Uh, who was committing burglaries against Chinese restaurants all across the nation. We caught him here in Lyon County after, uh, he burglarized the China King Buffet in, uh, Fernley. Um, he posted bail. However, he had a immigration hold and was promptly picked up, uh, by DHS, uh, for deportation. So, uh, the sanctuary, um, tag was not put on the state, obviously because of Lyon County. We're humble enough to know that we're not big enough to affect that. But if you're asked, I just want you, you guys to know that, uh, we cooperate with our federal partners. Uh, since I've been sheriff, this is obviously the second, uh, presidential, uh, administration has changed. And, uh, we've cooperated with both sides. Our, our, uh, our policies don't shift with political winds. So just want to give you a heads up if you're asked about that, you know, the answer, so.
Are you getting any, uh, is it hampering you in any way at the White House, um, because of the sanctuary tag?
No, so we were operating under the two eighty-seven G program, uh, two, two sheriff's office administrations ago. They let that, uh, the last administration let that program expire. Uh, we have since reapplied. Uh, does give us an in on federal grants. Uh, the Lyon County Sheriff's Office operates on little to zero federal grants. Uh, so the sanctuary status, if they do pull federal grants, won't affect the sheriff's office per se, but it will affect the larger sheriff's offices in the state of Nevada. Um, so we're not affected by it much, but no, we, we haven't received any pushback or.
Thank you. Any questions for? Chair?
Yeah, uh, thank you for complying with the laws from the federal on down. I appreciate that in our county. Also, uh, thank you for the emphasis in Smith Valley on traffic control. I know I talked to you privately, but do appreciate seeing the people doing fifty, sixty miles an hour through Wellington. Being pulled over now, um, they certainly, uh, don't care if they fly through that area. And some of it is somewhat blind and, and, you know, going by a CG bar and, and tractor dealer there. But, uh, I know Senator Titus, uh, who's very appreciative of the, uh, enforcement, especially in front of her house there. Because they are screaming there all the way through Long and Cut Off. So thanks again for all your efforts.
And, uh, to try and help out Mr. DeChambeau, tell Deputy Taylor to get out on Osborne Lane and take legal death.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Do we have any other elected officials reports? Saying that, we'll move on to opponent officials reports. For Foley.
Josh Foley, Lyon County Council for the record. Good morning. Uh, just want to let you know that next week is Fair Road. You're reminded to put that on your calendars if you get a chance to visit. Uh, it's a big effort by the fair board and the staff in my office. So we appreciate your support for that. The Dayton Depot, I received notification yesterday that they received one bidder, the insurance did on that. And they, um, are working with that bidder to get the final price. I have asked if they provide that information to us before they award the bid. So we can discuss if there are any changes potentially that the board would like. So it's very possible either the next agenda or the one after that we put an agenda item on the board's agenda to discuss this, what the county share of that price is. And then have the Historical Society and community, uh, members from Dayton here to provide input, um, on a, anything the board needs to be aware of. In addition to that, uh, the Dayton Government Complex were in the process of, uh, moving forward with that. The C Mars on board, as you know, since you selected the C Mar. They are almost finished with their constructability design. They're getting their comments together for the architect, anticipate to have that done this month. Hopefully by the end of this month, beginning of next month, submit building permits. So we can move forward on that. In addition, uh, to also advertise for subcontractors to get all the information from subcontractors. It towards the end of September, because they're giving, uh, four, four weeks to get those bids in. And then a little bit of time to evaluate it mid-October. We're hopeful to have the, uh, GMP prepared by the C Mar, which would put that on your first meeting in November if the plan that's aligned. Properly in that timeframe, just so you're aware. There are two items with significantly longer lead times. We're hopeful to get construction done in about twelve months. However, the switch here is somewhere between fifty-two to fifty-eight weeks out when you order it, which is the electrical components, uh, to turn power on to the building. The generator. Can be up to sixty-five, uh, weeks or so, a little bit longer timeframe. We do have one that we used to have at the Justice Complex and we pulled out and put a larger one into fully powered district court. They're checking to see if we can reuse that one since it's low hours and it's a large generator. If we can reuse it, that eliminates that piece of it. However, they're likely to come back and split the GMP into two portions. One, the switchgear slash generator, if need be. And get that done right away so that we can order that and get the lead time, get it coming. So we don't have a. And get that done right away so that we can order that and get the lead time, get it coming. So we don't have a building built and you have to wait for weeks. To actually turn power, electricity or the power and the HVAC systems on in that building. And then the second one would be coming back with the G M P on gross maximum price on the rest of the building. So those are the updates I have on those. There is a little bit of uh discussion right now. With court services on whether it should be under the justice courts as it currently is under the friendly justice court. Uh justice piece, or if it should be under the executive branch of government to prevent any conflicts of interest. About half of our size counties out there do it one way, half of them do it the other way. So we're having those discussions. It's possible that'll end up on your agenda the next. Next few meetings to have a discussion on whether we should change who that department reports to or to whom they report. I think that's all I have uh that you guys are going to care about today.
Any questions?
Yes. You know, we sat down a couple of months ago and and looked at the plans for the uh government complex and. Are we going to see kind of a final? This is what we plan on building based on our input from the commissioners?
So we uh we can definitely, county manager can schedule those meetings. Basically, we took all of those recommendations into the architect and. Uh took a look at it, but we definitely need to talk about. I know you brought up a piece about having a guard at the front. Right away, we have it shelled in where it's not that way, but we can bring that back and have discussion with the board and see how you want to do that.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Questions? Thank you, Mr. Foley. Any other appointed officials?
Good morning. Taylor Ellison, Emergency Management Government Affairs Director for the record. As was mentioned, we participated. Um in the Nevada Association of Counties Legislative Forum on Friday. Uh it's great opportunity to share some of the lessons learned that we had during the legislative session. Some themes we saw such as economic development, um housing related to elections and other areas where we leaned forward. Um we did get some questions about. Our county choosing to in-source lobbying and tools that we use related to the tracking software. Um and lessons learned from an administrative and logistics standpoint. So some of other. Um counties in our state have reached out for that information. I've been happy to share that as. We move forward and and do what works best for our team. So I'm happy to continue to bring that forward. It was great to do it virtually instead of all of us having to travel to Vegas for the conference. So I appreciated that. And then I just wanted to highlight, since it was mentioned, the federal FEMA reform. We have had opportunities from emergency management to comment. And provide comments to the FEMA Advisory Council on what that looks like from a local government perspective. And some of those include having a local first perspective um. Resources have been disproportionately allocated at the federal level. And it does not help us on the front lines in responding to disasters efficiently. So we provided those comments. Some of them. We can anticipate seeing with that two-thirds reduction in staff and increased burden on all of us at the local level. Through state-to-state requests. We've already had requests for Taskbook Qualified Emergency Management Personnel from Nevada to deploy. To areas such as Texas, Florida, and New Mexico. So it's only a matter of time before our staff are deployed to one of these disasters. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to bring back additional information to the board.
You have any comments? I do, I I liked your your point that you made at the at that meeting uh about in-house. I think you probably made some other lobbyists out there. Upset a little bit, but uh I I think the the need to have it in-house. You know, a lot of people have been doing that and also uh how you're interacting and the and the people that you've met and everything. Uh telling the story is probably the most important thing and being able to do that and how it affects our our county and that came over. By every everyone in that group. So that to me is an important uh aspect of it. Thank you. Any more appointed officials? And move on to. Advisory Board reports. Have any advisory board? Seeing none, we'll go on to the consent agenda. Actually, we've taken all items. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon. By the Board of County Commissioners with one action and without an extensive hearing. Any member of the board or any citizen may request an arrival and be taken from the consent agenda discussed and acted upon separately during this meeting.
Is anyone want?
Uh just um before we decide if we're pulling anything, I just want to thank all the county staff that wrote and. Uh went after the uh various grants that were um approving today.
Any other comments or anybody want one pulled? Anything from the public? Have a comment or want one pulled? Seeing none in the room, seeing none online, bring it back for a motion.
A move to approve the consent agenda items twelve A through twelve team.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hockaday, seconded by Commissioner Jacobson. Those in favor say aye. Motion passes five zero. Thirteen A for possible for possible action, accept donations totaling fifty-seven thousand one hundred seventy-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. To purchase a replacement K nine vehicle for the sheriff's office. The donors are Circle Bar and Ranch LLC for five thousand, Desert Engineering Incorporated, five thousand. Perry and Sons Farms Incorporated, thirty-seven thousand one hundred seventy-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. Western Nevada Supply Company. Five thousand additional donor wishing to remain anonymous for five thousand. Sheriff Pope.
Uh good morning again, Lion County Sheriff Brad Pope for the record. Um it's really self-explanatory. I'm I'm just here to uh express my gratitude to these donors. Means a lot to us. Uh this specific group of donors does a lot uh for the region. And uh we're very thankful, very grateful that they're part of this community and uh offer their assistance literally every time. Anyone asks, so we appreciate it and I just want that to be on my record.
Any questions or comments?
Um Derek Keller, I'd just like to thank those donors and and. Sheriff Pope for going out and and recruiting this, saving the taxpayer money and and uh. Again, just a heartfelt thanks to all the donors. That's an incredible gift.
Uh just to clarify, Commissioner Sergeant Matt Galvin went out and uh treated these donors. And uh and then told me about it, so I had very little to do with it.
Mr. Hendricks.
And I I too just want to thank the the donors. I mean, this is really a substantial donation.
Okay, well, any public comment? Seeing none, bring it back to the board for reaction.
Move to accept donations totaling fifty-seven thousand one hundred and seventy-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. To purchase a replacement K nine vehicle for the sheriff's office.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hendrick, seconded by Commissioner Hockaday. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Brings us to number fourteen A for possible action, prove a contract between Axon Enterprise and Lion County Juvenile. Probation for five years in the amount of seven thousand seven hundred ninety-one dollars and twelve cents. Per year for tasers for the juvenile probation department with first year funding through a budget transfer from the general fund contingency. Go ahead.
Morning, guys. Uh Brian Kirkley for the record, juvenile probation chief. Um we had originally submitted this as a budget item. And got our wires crossed on our end, unfortunately, and when the final budget came in, the the money was not allocated, so. I just want to emphasize the importance of this. All our tasers right now in inventory have gone beyond that five-year mark, which. Axon will no longer fix them, they will no longer uh warranty them. In addition to that, um there's other things that. You know, we want to make sure we're staying ahead of the game on, and these are the most optimal, this this optimization of the tasers is is. Especially important for less than lethal force. And kind of just citing the language that I put in the original budget proposal. Um we think it's critical for the safety of our department and for the community to be able to have that force option, so. Give any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions?
Budgeted and missed over or I see.
Josh Foley, Lion County Comptroller for the record. I was under the impression it was within the one of their line items. Unfortunately, it was not, so there was a little bit of miscommunication. We would have recommended it to the board. Actually, if you look at the budget, it says this line item. Uh will have tasers in it to replace them. So you have the concept. We just didn't unfortunately have that dollar announced in their their request.
Gotcha. Any questions? Bring back the vote for motions.
Uh Jim Keller, I'm making the motion to approve a contract between Axon Enterprise and Lion County Juvenile Probation for five years in the amount. Of seven thousand seven hundred ninety-one dollars and twelve cents per year for tasers for the juvenile probation department. With first year funding through a budget transfer from the general fund contingency.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Jacobson, seconded by Commissioner Hockaday. Those in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes five zero.
Thank you very much, guys.
We want fifteen A for possible action, approve a request from Microsoft Corporation for master plan amendment and. Amend the master plan designation for employment to commercial on approximately fifty on twenty-one acres. At a two hundred and forty-three point five-nine acre parcel in Silver Springs, located in North Highway fifty. A P N all one five, Grand Paul one thirteen, P L Z twenty-five five. Twenty-six.
Mr. Colonel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Commissioners Lewis, Carriola, Senior Planner, presenting. We've got two Microsoft items today on the agenda. Uh both presentations will look um. Virtually, they'll look virtually identical. Uh the first here is the request for the master plan amendment. So the parcel location is located in Silver Springs. We see the relative location um to the intersection of highways ninety-five A. And Highway fifty uh in the vicinity map on the left and then on the right, we're zoomed in on the parcel itself. Uh the end-up maintenance yard on the on the north side of Highway fifty is surrounded by the subject parcel on the north, east, and west. So as right into the record, the the subject parcels over uh two hundred and forty-nine acres, but only twenty-one acres is proposed for the master plan amendment. Uh the site is vacant, although it does have uh some unofficial roadways running through it as well as some uh easements for power lines. Getting into the master plan designation, uh this whole area of Silver Springs is within a suburban character district, suburban character districts. Uh as we always state from planning, uh do typically have uh service areas for public utilities and that would be the case here. The master plan designation itself, you see on the right in an image from the applicant's middle materials. Uh is employment and you see that um entire area uh of the subject area is also employment. The zoning is service industrial, uh something that Microsoft had uh previously amended. Uh for currently the entire two hundred and forty-nine acre site, uh just to the north, just to kind of make a note here. Uh that would be that track development uh that we saw previously uh this calendar year. Uh to the north and they likewise uh changed their zoning to service industrial. So the request details are depicted here in the image, just those twenty-one acres on the east side of the subject parcel. Uh they propose for amendment to neighborhood. Commercial, I'm sorry, to commercial master plan uh. And that would match commonly owned properties. Uh those would be Microsoft-owned parcels to the east. And per the applicant's middle materials, uh the reasoning for requesting just the twenty-one acres for amendment. Is that a future mapping exercise, which a county has already seen some of uh to merge and re-subdivide the the Microsoft-owned parcels. Would then create an entire parcel for a future development of an uh an electrical substation. So this is just a quick image of a preliminary map uh that would depict. The potential new configurations uh for, again, the previously mentioned mapping exercise that. Uh staff has advised the applicant to uh to put on hold until we've moved through uh the requested amendments to master plan and zoning. So that when uh a new parcel is recorded, that it doesn't have split designations. So it's just really a matter of order of operations. Technically, we could have gone through the mapping exercises first. Um but we've we've kind of historically done it this way. Uh chapter fifteen to ten oh three of uh Lion County's Development Corridor out of fifteen includes the findings for a master plan amendment. And staff was able uh to make those findings. Uh some of the highlights uh are shown here on the slide. Uh prominently in making the findings for this requested zone change. Is the fact that that we do have one of the twenty-twenty master plans B L M above-ground utility corridors. Uh running right through uh this section of Lion County. So as previously mentioned, that Silver Springs Technology Park uh property is sort of on the north side of what we see that. That uh roughly horizontal east-west corridor depicted here, and then Microsoft is on the south side. So um the idea of proposing a substation here uh does make sense. Uh as does the request to service industrial zoning um and the commercial master plan that we're considering here. So again, further with with the uh with the highlights for the findings, um we were able to make findings that this uh matches. Uh some of the goals and policies from the twenty-twenty master plan, specifically supporting a diverse economic base. Being thoughtful about the locations of business and industry locations. Uh the previously mentioned above ground corridor, staff was unable to find any adverse impacts from the proposed change. Uh from employment to commercial in the master plan. And the Planning Commission did hear this item uh and felt the same way. Recommending uh approval to this board six zero at their regularly regularly scheduled uh. Meeting of July eight, twenty twenty-five. Uh one commissioner was absent. I am available for questions and the applicant does have representation here if you have questions with them.
Questions? When you say unofficial roadways, does that create any problems? Because it's on the map, we end up with. Other things that have roads and that people say that isn't a road and we say, yeah, it's on the map and now we have it on the map and now it's unofficial.
That's that's a good question, uh Mr. Chair. So. Microsoft has had to gone through, go through formal abandonment of uh Rialy, Rial light lane. Uh officially was listed on our maps, but we have gone through that abandonment process, whether or not some of our G I S maps. Have been updated is probably something we need to pay a bit more attention to. Um but when there are unofficial or I'm sorry, let me step back. If there are actual roadways that are right of ways that were created through a mapping process that are on the maps. Then an abandonment would be a formal process. It would not be something we would do through a master planner zone change. That to go through a mapping process and a formal abandonment process.
Especially on the date of that. If they go back too far, we end up with the RS two seven seven roads.
Oh, yes, sir.
Doesn't problem, so.
Yes, sir, and 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 that would be something if one of those public access uh star public accesses were were to be abandoned. Part of the review and approval process for the abandonment would have to provide new access or ensure that it's maintained some way.
Do we have any questions from the public?
So if there are roads in that parcel, how are you going to handle when somebody says they've got a prescribed right because they've been using that road for a hundred years?
That's what we were just discussing.
Well, I understand that, but you didn't come up with an answer.
Go ahead. Did you sign in?
Yeah, I did.
Yes, I did.
Okay, I didn't hear you say your name at the for the record.
You're DeChambeau.
Thank you. Go ahead. Thank you. Go ahead. Please sign in and state your name.
I, Johanna, I, Naga, Nina, Nina, and Johanna M. And I'm here to ask um, Microsoft about the um wildlife, the wild horses in that area. How will that impact the wildlife as well as Silver Springs is more or less a historical site for me? Why I'm wearing the red skirt is where our two Paiute women were kidnapped, and that caused the Paiute wars. And although it may not be important to development today, it is important to me as a descendant of those Paiute wars. Um, Lake Lahotan, of course, is the William State Station uh, site where the Paiute wars began, where the two girls were found. So I'm just saying the whole site area is historical, and it's important to the Paiute people. Um, because we we are the go shoot Nui Nui Washi Nations, and we do have treaty rights. And you're also a part of that treaty. Everyone in this state also is covered by that treaty, the treaty of the Walpapi, Walpapi Treaty. And also the Northwest Ordinance of seventeen eighty-seven, which says the utmost good faith shall always be observed towards the Indians, their lands and property shall never be invaded or disturbed unless in just unlawful or wars authorized by Congress. So I just wanted you to add that to an opposition to the master planning and zoning chain. Thank you.
Public comment. I'm Jeff Lewis.
I'm Laurie Tom. I'm listening to the project and overseeing some of the uh, projects that have happened in the past. I was the chairman of the Yerington Paiute Tribe. At that time, I was asked to go over to the Silver Springs area and Lahon area to go over um, cultural um identification sites, sacred sites, and other um basically findings from NDOT because they wanted to do an open pit over there. So there is a list that we have um, on record with NDOT, and I don't know if Microsoft or anybody else has gone through and communicated with NDOT. It's not a public list. It is private, and NDOT can tell whether or not um there are sacred sites or there are cultural findings in those areas, and they'd like to make sure that that process was followed. Um, right now, I'm a council member for the Yerington Paiute Tribe, but I'm speaking on my own behalf because I have this knowledge from the past.
Those refrain from clapping. I'm every item. We don't boo, we don't clap, we don't do any of that. It's disruptive.
Uh, Mr. Chair, if I might, I apologize for interrupting. I'd like to just add a little commentary here uh, for the record. These two items that we're hearing today are simply land use and zoning requests, their designation changes, no development is proposed or able to be approved uh, through this process. So that would come through an additional process and review. And if there are entities that we could be sharing our development applications with for comment, uh, the there folks are welcome to contact me directly. We'll add them.
Thank you. Any comments from the board? Uh. Did Microsoft want to say anything? Just give me the opportunity if you felt you needed to.
Ms. Huggins is here from the Rogers and seems to be okay with my presentation advocates.
Okay, just want to give the opportunity. And we went to public comment, so. Bring it back to the board for action. A motion.
Mayor Keller, uh, Castanelli online. Um, based on aforementioned findings A through E, I move that the Lyon County Board of County Commissioners approve the requests from Microsoft Corporation for a master plan amendment to change the designation from employment to commercial on approximately twenty-one acres of a two hundred forty-three point five-nine acre parcel, APN zero one five dash one four one dash one three, PLZ twenty twenty-five dash zero twenty-six.
No, second. Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Castanelli, seconded by Commissioner Jacobson. Those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Brings us to fifteen B for possible action to approve a request from Microsoft Corporation for a zoning map amendment to amend the zoning designation from service industrial to neighborhood commercial on approximately twenty-one acres of a two hundred forty-three point five-nine acre parcel in Silver Springs located at US Highway fifty, APN zero one five, one four one, one three, PLZ twenty-five, twenty-five to twenty-seven. Mr. Carriola.
Thank you, sir. Again, Louis Carriola uh, presenting. So this is the follow-up requested zone change for the same twenty-one subject acres of the uh, subject parcel located on the north side of highway fifty in Silver Springs west of the intersection of highway fifty with ninety-five A. Uh, again, as previously mentioned, uh, the site generally surrounds uh, the NDOT maintenance yard uh, and is bound by highway fifty right of way in the southern side. Uh, the master plan designation still suburban. Um, and now um, due to uh, the approval for the previous item, uh, the master plan uh, would be commercial for the subject twenty-one acres. Uh, thank you. Uh, the zoning uh, still service industrial for the entire two hundred and forty-nine plus acre subject parcel. And the proposed amendment for this item is to change the zoning to neighborhood commercial. Uh, neighborhood commercial would match the commonly owned Microsoft property zoning to the east of neighborhood commercial. And again, as previously mentioned, uh, there will be a future mapping exercise that would merge uh, a number of the the Microsoft parcels and then create a fewer number of parcels. They just would be larger. One of them depicted in the in the northeast corner there in light green uh, is the estimated area that would incorporate the twenty-one acres that are subject of this requested zone change. Or a portion of it. Uh, the findings for a zoning map amendment were likewise found uh, in the affirmative by staff. They're found in our Development Code Title Fifteen, Chapter twenty twenty oh five. Uh, and the same uh, comments as as made in the previous item regarding the master plan amendment uh, were applicable for staff's findings for the zone change in that recognizing the location of the above-ground utility corridor, the nearby tract uh, project. And I didn't mention this previously, but these above-ground utility corridors are the local, local Lyon County locations to connect to uh, statewide Nevada Energy Greenlink Project. So that's a a large statewide, large-scale utility upgrade uh, connecting to public land projects, including solar projects. Um. These these are locations in Lyon County uh, where the entitlement process through the twenty twenty master plan is deemed to be uh, moved from a conditional use permit in public hearings in those locations for high voltage power lines into uh, a staff level review. I'm sure we have some right to place conditions. Um, but it is, again, the location Lyon County where we expect to connect to the Greenlink projects. The Planning Commission likewise heard this item on July eight, twenty twenty-five, and also recommended approval six-zero with one commissioner absent uh, for the requested zone change for twenty-one acres from service industrial to neighborhood commercial. I'm again available for questions. Huggins is here, but I get the impression she won't be presenting.
Any questions from the board? Any public comments? Any online? See, now I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Based on findings A through C, I move that the Lyon County Board of County Commissioners approve the request from Microsoft Corporation for zoning map amendment to amend zoning designation from SI Service Industrial to NC Neighborhood Commercial on approximately twenty-one acres of a two hundred forty-three point five-nine acre parcel in Silver Springs located north of US Highway fifty, APN zero one five, one four one thirteen, PLZ twenty twenty-five dash zero two seven.
I have a second.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hendricks, seconded by Commissioner Jacobson. Those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes five zero. This one uh, might take a little bit longer. Does anybody want to break? All right. Nope. Okay. Moving on to fifteen C to approve the request from Copia Power, Devco LLC for a master plan amendment from agriculture to specific plan for the Monarch Data Center consisting of four point six million square feet of data centers, over fourteen separate buildings, and to include battery energy storage system, the potential natural gas backup system, an electrical substation, high voltage power lines, and other accessory uses over two parcels totaling five hundred and five acres in Mason Valley east of US Highway ninety-five A and accessed by Penrose Lane. Mr. Carriola.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Louis Carriola, Senior Planner, presenting. So um, we have now moved locations. The subject area uh, for this proposed master plan amendment uh, is located in Mason Valley. On the left, we see our vicinity map showing the general location east of highway fifty and north of Yerington. Uh, there are two subject parcels on the order of five hundred and five acres in total. On the right, we see the direct connection between the subject parcels uh, along Penrose Lane connecting to highway ninety-five A. These images are from the County Assessors Office and do show uh, the calculated areas for the two parcels. Again, the total area uh, is on the order of five hundred and five acres. The current use for the site is is field crops and the raising of livestock. Uh, the site is traversed uh, by irrigation ditches that are under the jurisdiction of the Walker River Irrigation District. Uh, it is notable that the uh, the property that bounds the subject area uh, to the east is owned by Nevada Fishing Game. Uh, approximately twelve thousand acres, that's just the one parcel, uh, and then the Walker River, of course, uh, is also to the east. Getting into the master plan designations, uh, this entire area of Mason Valley is within our rural character district uh, typified by the lack of public utilities for water and sewer. Uh, the image on the right is from the applicant's middle. It's an uh, a modified version of our twenty twenty master plan uh, maps for this area showing uh, open space to the east of subject area and the current designation of agriculture uh, for the approximately five hundred and five acres. Uh, as we discuss every time when we talk about zoning, uh, many of these properties still hold uh, expired zoning district names. So for the uh, consistency matrix, essentially a conversion document that we adopted in twenty eighteen with Title Fifteen, our current development code. Uh, the applicable zoning for the the five hundred and five acres as well as all the surrounding properties, it's rural residential twenty acre minimum. So getting into some of the request details, uh, I I know uh, sometimes it it's difficult to understand some of the the specific language used in planning. Because when we say specific plan, uh, does mean a couple different things. We have uh, specific plan is a master plan designation. Uh, it's typically assigned to a number of areas that are more rural throughout the county. Uh, but in addition, there's also uh, an actual specific plan, which is a larger master plan document. And that's what the proposes proposal today is for. It's to amend the master plan designation from agriculture to specific plan. Uh, it does not actually approve the development itself, but it does change the designation so that future projects can come forward and request uses that would be somewhat, that would be consistent, I'm sorry, with what we are hearing today, a specific plan for a data center project. So moving through our Development Code Title Fifteen, uh, there are, I think, more details within the staff report, but here I've got some highlights. That master plan amendments per Title Fifteen uh, for areas over one hundred and sixty acres do require some middle of a specific plan. And for planning purposes, you know, a specific plan, even though it's still a master plan designation, does provide for what is termed as a as a more precise implementation of the master plan. So that would mean a better description of uses, uh, some language about how access is provided. Uh, what kind of relationship would a project within a specific plan have with neighboring properties? Um, while again, we're not getting into the actual buffer details and the granular level of the development. Um, here at the master plan level, we are still seeking to find uh, some answers and some ideas of how changing this designation will uh, affect neighboring properties, and that's what we'll be moving through here in the rest of the presentation, is some of staff's uh concerns with that and and the items that are addressed in the staff report. Uh, but first, I did want to, I know I don't want to be too long-winded on this, but I think sometimes there's there's some difficulty in understanding the planning process. So again, a specific plan does provide a mix of land uses with the applicable character district and Assista County with future planning of infrastructure and services. But it does not itself change the underlying zoning, and it does not itself approve projects. It does, however, and I recall Chair Keller mentioning this a year ago when we were approving a different specific plan. Since it changes the master plan designation, and now it's a a more discreet document, it does provide the framework for all future entitlements that come forward when the finding is related to the specific plan. So a planning to development in this case is is what the applicant has provided or has been uh, advised to pursue or this to be approved today. And then additional administrative design reviews, whatever other planning process would be executed that involves consistency with the master plan, we would now be looking at this specific plan uh, to provide that information. Uh, the applicant certainly has um, representation here today from uh, from both Copia Power as well as, I believe, the traffic engineer. Uh, so I will kind of move through some of these slides a bit more quickly. Uh, they are images from the staff report. Um, but I I won't want to speak for the applicant, but I do feel we should run through the conceptual plan here. So um, the the details of a a future project are not really depicted here. We're seeing again some conceptual conceptual ideas of the areas uh, for what is proposed as uh, a north and south uh, campus. Each would include data center buildings as well as their own substations. Uh, there'd be a a a switching station, just modifying voltages uh, for the project uh, as well as in that northeast corner. Uh, again, still conceptual, but this is a generalized area for a batter, a proposed battery energy storage system. Um. We will probably have opportunities to look at this again, and I know the applicant will have uh, these images in their slides, so. For brevity's sake, I'm just going to kind of move through my presentation. Of course, be available for questions. So this is just a bit more detail uh, about the conceptual plans. They would include fourteen separate structures uh, of data centers uh, constituting four point approximately four point six million square feet of data center footprint. Um, the battery energy storage system, the electrical substations uh, would of course be necessary for projects like this. Uh, we will have to see substations essentially in all of these data center projects. Um, they do need that to modulate the voltages for their projects. Um, and then I I did want to point out, I made a note here in the bottom of the slide that as of July thirty, twenty twenty-five, we have here in Lyon County approved uh, a new ordinance for our renewable energy uh, uh, code sections. So County Manager Haskin brought that forward for geothermal for solar, and it does include standards for for battery energy storage systems. So any future development proposals that come forward to us while uh, a potential planning to development might modify the ability uh, for the applicant to propose the development. The county would now have an ordinance in place for all of these types of uses, including the battery energy storage systems. So that would directly inform the expectations and standards uh, that we would be applying to any future entitlement. Uh, there are some conceptual images here in the applicant's materials. That's where this has come from, uh, as well as being uh, copied into the staff report. This would be the end of Penrose Lane. Uh, so this is over a mile east from highway ninety-five A. Uh, the conceptual images show the the estimated um visual impacts of the buildings using existing Uh, topography and vegetation. You can barely see the buildings in, in the background. Um, but. That is, of course, at the end of Penrose Lane. Um, from Highway ninety-five. We'd still have to be reviewing future entitlements, uh, but it's not expected the visual impacts would be all that severe. This is again another um, another image, uh, again, north. Just as the last image north would be to the left. Um, but I did, I know I keep saying this over and over, but a planning development would be the vehicle. In which staff would uh get down to that granular nitty-gritty details of development, be able to place some conditions on it, modify it, ensure. Uh, the irrigation ditches, for instance, were maintained. Uh, that open space was provided, that buffers were provided. And most importantly, that review process would still involve multiple public hearings, uh, including the planning commission and the board of county commissioners. Uh, the findings for a master plan amendment and specific plans uh were included in the staff report. The code sections are quoted here. Uh, and just as we heard for the Microsoft items, uh, this project location is again. Uh, I think purposely, I know purposely. Chosen because of the location of these above-ground utility corridors, uh, connecting that larger statewide electric generation. Um, utility scale project into Lyon County. So this image is from our twenty twenty master plan. And the next slide will show an image uh generated by the applicant showing the relative project location. Uh, I did add the labels of corridor, uh, but those Matt will just saw in the previous image. So as we can see, uh, this. Project location connects. To the north to that Walker River Substation project. So we. We've all been able to see the uh construction out there. That's a very large lay-down yard and the expansion there is creating. Uh, sort of a, a notable. Earth. Like on planet earth-sized substation project here in Lyon County up at the Walker River Substation, and we see that corridor connection to the east. Uh, is already intended for connection. So some of the findings, uh, highlights from staff, uh, again, like the Microsoft item. Uh, staff was able to recognize support of a, a dynamic economic base as well as. Uh, choosing business locations, again, based on those above-ground corridors. Uh, there are and would have to be uh future entitlements and applications under review. Uh, for any actual development to occur. Uh, in this case, it would be a planned unit development. Potentially conditional use permits, depending on the standards within the planned unit development, certainly staff-level design reviews if and when those items had been approved. Uh, there, of course, would have to be building permits, independent submittals to fire districts. I would note that the new renewable energy code that just went into effect. Uh, at the end of last month for battery energy storage systems. It does have. Specific language about the fire suppression systems. And the applicant being uh financially and logistically responsible for creating. Uh, full plan for approval, uh, where the local fire districts unable. Uh, to provide uh the necessary services. Um, Walker River Irrigation District would maintain um their jurisdiction over the ditches. Uh, we had in planning would be working directly with their director. On how the, their existing easements and rights. Uh, to authorize uh the use of those ditches would have to be maintained in the new project design. Um, but as featured in the staff report and as discussed at some length at the planning commission meeting last month. Traffic mitigation measures will be required for this, uh, and it was a point of, of real concern for staff. So I will kind of move through. Uh, a number of slides here uh that are directly connected to the Kinley Horn Traffic Impact Study. Uh, that was submitted as part of the applicant's package. Uh, one of the attachments to the staff report and the publicly posted agenda also included. The Nevada Department of Transportation responses to that traffic impact study. And uh, some of those, some of those uh attachments are depicted here in part in the presentation, and they are keyed upon by staff. Uh, as items of concern. So I will kind of run through this. I think just for general background information and the basis of. Of why this was something that, that we tried to take a closer look at. Was that, as we all know, Highway ninety-five connecting Silver Springs and Yarrington, single lane in each direction. Um, I've traveled that road twelve, you know, the last two days each day, and each day I see someone making unsafe pass. We took advantage of this specific plan process. To request that the applicant do something that is not typical, especially at the master plan level, which is to submit to us. A traffic impact study by a licensed traffic engineer for the construction phase of the project. So typically N dot uh process would include, and of course, N dot has jurisdiction, not Lyon County, right over their highways. Is to look at the operational phase, the final project, and then assess the traffic impacts. Uh, Lyon County planning is recon- recognized that we have multiple projects in this area. Uh, and the construction timelines for these projects are years long. Because of the scale of the projects. And if we start having multiple projects with overlapping extended timelines on single-lane roads. We wanna have a bit more data as we're moving forward. So now we'll jump into some of the images from the traffic impact study. I, again, I do wanna point out. I am not a traffic engineer and the actual traffic engineer should be available for comment. Um, so some of my. Some of my descriptions here may seem a bit generalized, but there will be opportunities uh to get more detailed information. So to begin, there were six uh intersections. That were reviewed as part of the traffic impact study, four of them along Highway ninety-five A. So if you look at the left side. Excuse me, the left side of the image. Uh, and then moving top to bottom, numbers one, three, five, and six are all along ninety-five A. Number one is up at Sierra Way. Number three is the entrance of Penrose. Lane. Uh, then we have Miller Lane and then uh Highway three thirty-nine's intersection here in Yarrington. And then over farther to the east would be number two. At the top, there would be a, a potential connection from Sierra Way down to Penrose Lane. And then uh the project access at Penrose Lane. So these numbers jumped out at us uh when the applicant submitted this traffic impact study for the construction. Um, for the construction phase. So uh, for everyone's understanding, uh, peak hours is a term that's used in traffic impact studies. Uh, typically addressing commuter hours. Uh, we're looking at seven A M. to nine A M. in the morning. And four P M. to six P M. in the evenings. That's the official end body.
If you're gonna be distraught, if you have to leave.
So. When one. Performs a traffic impact state study. The peak hours are defined as shown on this slide. And the estimated trips were over eleven hundred hour or eleven hundred trips in the A M. And over twelve hundred trips in the P M. Uh, for the construction phase of this project. So with that said, mitigation would be required. So if we move into some more of, of the, the. Uh, calculations from the study, we see that at that operational phase, they dropped down in the A M. to. Just over five hundred hours, right? Forty-five percent of that construction base. And drop down to calculated at four hundred and fourteen in the P M. That's about a third of what we were seeing during the construction phase. But again, a project of this scale potentially overlapping with other. Uh, timelines for other large projects would obviously create some issues on ninety-five A. Some of the recommendations coming out of the traffic study are included here in the presentation and in the staff report. Uh, notably, the recommendation for six hundred and fifty-foot de-acceleration lanes, uh, both north and south. To the Penrose Lane access. Uh, as well as during the construction phase, even a temporary traffic's uh signal. Uh, again, the traffic engineer could answer more, more detailed questions on this. Uh, the estimated background plus construction. For, um. For the, the intersection with Penrose Lane, this is the actual image, I'm sorry, that does show that the N dot warrant. Would justify a temporary traffic signal. Uh, and warrant simply is really just a term that's used by N dot for a threshold that is passed when a certain level of service based on too many trips. For the existing infrastructure to maintain, um, then is tricked, is tricked. So we would have this in Highway fifty and other parts of the county when a new subdivision went in, and now we needed a, a light instead of just a stop sign, for instance. Uh, this is a screenshot from one of the comments from N dot and, and some of the timing here is, is a little difficult. When, you know, the, the applicant is submitting a traffic study that's not typically part of N dot's process. And that does still provide some comments, but typically before any kind of construction or authorizations for. Uh, development would be issued. The uh, the back and forth communication between N dot, the applicant and the county would have to be fully completed. Agreeing upon what mitigations will be required. In other words, mitigations being additional improvements to roadways to sustain the added traffic. Uh, one of the comments that was made by N dot. Based on the Kinley Horn Traffic Impact Study. Was that even down here in Yarrington, the intersection of three thirty-nine. Uh, and ninety-five A would drop to what's recognized being a level of service F. For the background construction or background trip. So that's the, our existing traffic. Plus the added uh impacts from uh the construction phase. So. We're not talking about just uh improvements potentially needing or mitigation just at Penrose. Uh, they would actually be along that full length of ninety-five A. So that's a process that still would need to be completely um reviewed. And approved, not just by, by Lyon County, but also by N dot. Uh, through what would be future uh, future requests by the applicant. It's not what we're doing today at the master plan level. So uh, the planning commission did make a recommendation of approval, uh, again, six zero at July, on July eight, twenty twenty-five. Um, but we did have, again, significant discussion about the potential uh effects of traffic. On ninety-five A. And I, I have highlighted again here down at the bottom that, you know, this is. This is a master plan request, not the actual development request. Uh, but this is necessary in order for an applicant to come forward. For proposing these uses because the uses as proposed would not be permitted with the current master plan designation of agriculture. Uh, I think that's it for my presentation. I am sure there will be plenty of questions. I am available, but again, there's um. There are a number of, of consultants available on applicant's behalf.
Anybody on the board up? Start with Jacobson and move on down. Commissioner Jacobson.
Thank you. Um, I could tell you put a lot of time into this, Lewis. It's appreciated. So, um. How far is the property line to, um, the Churchill Power Plant?
Oh, I, I don't, it's gotta be a mile.
And, and the Churchill Power Plant is on Sierra?
Yes, sir.
So. In traveling that.
Had that somewhere, but it's not in there. I'm sorry.
In traveling that, it seemed like there's residences and. Folks living down Penrose, is that correct?
I'm sorry? Yeah. Yeah, so, so a mile down Penrose.
So what, um. Was there any discussion about? I know you said, I believe it was one or two on your map there, but. Directing traffic down. Sierra.
There, there has been some, some discussion about that. Uh, I've brought that up with the applicants. I think they can probably comment on that. Um, it is certainly a consideration for any future proposed development plan to reroute. It's, it's, it's an option to potentially reroute construction traffic.
Alright, um.
Alright, that's, we can come back to more questions as it happens. Go ahead, Commissioner Hendricks.
That's basically my comment to everything north of this project between there and Sierra Way is open field. And I would wanna see the access, have them build a road up to Sierra Way and have all that development traffic. Hit the highway at one point and one point only. I don't wanna keep duplicating what we have on fifty, and it wouldn't impact the residents. It's a simple solution, and I think that right from the get-go, we should make that happen.
Please, it doesn't help from the audience to be talking. Sheriff, could you have a conversation? You'll all have your chance to talk at the podium under public comment. Please refrain. So I have mine, mine's gonna be over the traffic. Most of it, most of my things are gonna be about the traffic. Um. And also, I, all the way down here to Goldfield, you know, because as we get more development, that light out there isn't gonna be. Great during, uh. Certain hours. So I think everything needs to be uh looked at, especially with that. Commissioner Alcindor, did you have anything?
I did. Uh, of course, everybody has pretty much uh stated the obvious. Um. Penrose going through a rural neighborhood. Uh, the road, I don't see would even hold up with twelve hundred vehicles. A day during construction. Um, moving north and using Sierra Way makes a heck of a lot more sense to me if you're, if this is gonna go through with the master plan change. Um. Closer to the substation. Basically away from the rural neighborhood road. Um. I, I've gotta agree with the other commissioners that this is definitely a, a project in an area that. We need the road to be in a different place, and that would be Sierra Way.
I also would like to look at maybe having, uh, I don't know what the opportunity for a frontage road out there is. But I don't really want people coming from the north and south turning at the same spot. Temporary light. I'm not for temporary lights because that's just gonna back up traffic for everybody else. So you're just making it good for that project, not good for. The rest of the county and for the rest of state, for that matter, people traveling, uh, moving goods from one county to another. So I would like to see if there's possibilities of front, frontage road out there to where you actually turn onto the frontage road, that to accept the capacity, storage of the vehicles as they turn to go to. To them from the project site.
Uh, Chair Keller.
Yes.
Cassinelli online here. Um, I just, uh, Lewis, thank you for the presentation. I needed a. Clarification. I'm trying to go through this packet, but the approximate twelve hundred trips. Is that uh specific to the, the construction of the project or is that encompassing? Uh, the normal traffic. I just needed a clarification on that.
Uh, thank you for the question, Commissioner Cassinelli. Uh, per the traffic impact study, that was attributed to the construction phase. So I know they did go out and counts, but I know uh Mister Jockman's online, he's a traffic engineer, conducted, conducted the study. Uh, I, I can ask maybe here uh that he addressed that directly when, when he comments, sir.
Okay, thank you. And then I agree with uh the other commissioners on uh, uh, Sierra. Uh, being a, a better, uh. Better option versus Penrose. Thank you.
Move on to the presentation.
Hi, Ashwood. For the record, Copia Power, um, our traffic engineer does have his hand raised if you would like him to answer those traffic questions now, or we can wait until that.
We can jump right into that if we, what, what is his name? I know it's not Kinley Horn.
Yeah.
Yes. Uh, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Hi, David Jockman, Kinley Horn Traffic Engineer for the record. So the, um. Just cutting right to the chase, your request is uh to consider realigning primary access for the development to the north along Sierra. Uh, exclusive access along Sierra. Is that, is that what you're saying? Is that correct?
Yes.
So the study that we have prepared was not, uh, done so with that in mind. So the, um. The slides that we are here to present are primarily to talk about improvements that would be made at Penrose. Uh, we, we don't have a study that would document the traffic impacts. That would result from the project exclusively in and out of Sierra. Um, I can tell you that the mitigations would likely be similar. But, um, I, I recognize that's not, uh. You know, that's. We, we don't have a study prepared to document what the, the request of this commission is at this time. So. The application before you is obviously discussing the. Access being in and out of Penrose, uh, for the initial phase of construction, that would be exclusive. At later stages in the development, uh. At later stages in the development, uh, secondary access would be along Sierra. Two access points uh likely will always need to be maintained for this. Uh, development due to its size for fire safety, but obviously for daily trips, it could be one or the other. Um. Ash, uh, Miss Miss Woods, I will defer to you because the question they're asking regarding. Access on Sierra is uh one that. I I I can't make as a as the traffic engineer, who the applicant needs to decide if that's of the interest of of your interest.
Yeah, this is Ash Woods. Thank you, David. Um, at this point, the the traffic study is preliminary. You know, we went and looked at the the obvious points that traffic. Flow would occur during construction to be able to get a sense of what this impact could look like. Um. And kind of as we're speaking today about the specific plan. Uh, this is really the first step in the process where later we would do more in-depth. Studies uh on a variety of topics to really lock down details of the project. And the traffic impact study would be one of them. Uh, so now that we're able to solicit feedback. Uh, now that the process is kind of just getting started, then you know, this is great feedback. We can add, uh, you know, some. Uh, K O Is over on Sierra Way and try to see if that's something that we can um. Add a a road there to speak with N dot.
Would it? Would it be okay if I could add a comment to that?
Yeah, go ahead, David.
So the um, the request of this body. It might be of interest to this body to have construction access be limited exclusively to Sierra Way. Um, I'm not sure if there is the uh mechanism in place. I'll defer to that for Mr. Carriola. If there is the mechanism mechanism in place for this body to render a condition on this application. In that fashion, I will say that upon build out of the project, we are talking about jobs here. And those jobs very well will be residents of the county. So um. Those trips, even if you provide the access permanently onto Sierra, that many of them may be making trips to the south, to and from the south for daily commuting. Um, so so providing a permanent access on Sierra, which traffic will be substantially lower on build out. The construction traffic I suspect is of your greatest concern. But build out traffic will be substantially lower. If we limit the permanent access to Sierra, then the folks who live along Penrose and to the west along Farrell will not um. See mitigations that will improve traffic safety at that intersection. So uh hopefully this is uh of help for you to understand this. Uh, hearing your concerns, my initial gut would be to say. Uh, we should limit that construction access to Sierra because those trips will likely be. Largely to and from the north, and there will be different kind of trips. But upon permanent build out, we're talking jobs where there will be local residents and it just in my. Objective opinion, access would make more sense at Penrose for that permanent build out stage.
So. We had a couple more questions here. Uh, Commissioner Jacobson had his hand up.
Thank you, Chair. Um. First of all, I appreciate the comments regarding jobs, but that isn't what we're talking about right now. We're talking about access and um. Project of this nature, I want to get it right on every step of the way. And so I'm not comfortable. If we don't have, if we need a traffic study coming off of Sierra, I'm not comfortable moving onto the next step without. Crossing our Ts so we don't get dotted in the eyes. Um, so I will want that. I will want a traffic study coming off of Sierra and the recommendations from that. Um, and it's my understanding that. You we need a secondary and a primary entrance anyhow. The recommendation has been primary down Penrose. If I'm if I'm mistaken, let me know. Primary, you'd like to see go run down Penrose. I think some of the residents and and uh I know one commissioner would like to see it come down. Share instead and share is supposed to be the alternate or backup. Secondary access in case of emergency fire, et cetera. Well. Am I, if I'm not mistaken, that. If we move the secondary access to Penrose, don't you gate that with a bar going across and you can open it? Or how does that work as a secondary access? Um, so that people aren't using that and they're using the primary down Sierra. How would, is is that not how that looks? Um, but again. Go ahead.
Sure, yeah. So the uh, you you could limit that to be a gated locked uh secondary access. That's typically just a requirement that would come for fire. Now, at this step in the process with a specific plan, you are not reviewing a site plan with that level of detail. But that is that 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 is the mechanism by which you could uh limit the. Daily primary access to to be egressing and ingressing by a Sierra. So it does not have to be some uh, uh, you know, arm or anything. It can be a literal lock that only the fire department uh can can unlock.
Commissioner Hockaday.
Well, thank you, Chairman Keller. I'm kind of getting the cart before the horse because the uh agenda item is for a master plan change. Which of course ended that knows my voting on polling agricultural land. Out of use for other things might. You know, we we've got to get to that before we start even worrying about the specific plan itself as to whether or not we're gonna allow that to happen.
Well, I think that uh the way it's agendized is agriculture to specific plan, so that's why we have, but it's a master plan change. That's why.
Way too specific. So.
Commissioner.
Yeah, uh, my concern is, you know, they're saying, oh, it's just a master plan change and access can be worked out later, but the. Actual agenda item specifically states access by Penrose Lane, and that's what I'm not comfortable with. I want it to be accessed by Sierra Way.
Yeah, we we definitely hear the traffic concerns. Um, we plan on working with N dot. Much more in depth throughout this process as site design progresses. Site design is something that comes. Later in the process that we would initiate in the step after this, which would be the planned unit development process. Uh, so that's where we would really have the opportunity to work very closely with N dot and understand uh where we can put a road to make Sierra Way. The the primary access point if that's preferred. Um, it's not necessarily something that we are um. Tied to just using Penrose. It's it was just the existing road infrastructure that was there. Um, that we chose to study as this kind of early phase conversations with N dot. So that's definitely something if we. Um, are hearing that Sierra Way is preferred. We're happy to work with N dot to figure out how to make that happen.
But the way this item is written. Isn't that an issue?
Uh, to whom is that question directed at? I apologize.
Adjourned to DA.
Yeah.
You'll hear whatever their report is when they come up. Are looking to whether that the DA's opinion on whether the wording is correct.
Thank you. Eberi District Attorney, if we could take just a short recess. That would be asked if the board member just remained at the dais, uh, so we just discuss it briefly.
Can one board member use the restroom?
Yes.
Thank you. We're gonna take a recess for five minutes or until this is solved. Not five minutes until this is solved. County Manager.
Andrew Haskin, Line County Manager. I've just uh spent some time reviewing this with the district attorney. Um, so. Because all the the documents, uh, there's some middle application and the way this was noticed, I'll say Penrose. Um, essentially, if the board were to approve this today, that would be the option. Penrose would be the the access for this project. Um, so really, the board has kind of three options. Uh, one is to approve the proposal as is. Um, two is to deny the proposal in in its entirety. Um. Then it cannot be brought back for a year or three to table the um item to allow the applicant to. Make some changes to the application based on um its comments today. Um. And we can go forward from there. Now, um, the applicant does have to um. Have to agree to the to the item being tabled.
So a question for you, if it does, uh. If it were to be tabled, how long of a timeframe would that need to be tabled for? Or do we just leave it open?
I think we would just leave it open to allow the applicant time to, I mean, I don't. We'd we'd leave it open to allow the applicant time to uh. You know, resubmit with the appropriate documents. Again, we I mean, we discussed a number of things, but because there's some middle was completely focused on Penrose. There's no traffic study, none of the maps and none of the proposed improvements to talk about uh um Sierra Way. And so we feel that um. There's just not enough. Information for the board to to make that decision.
Well, this is a significant project, so we're gonna have to really go through it. Uh. Commissioner Jackson.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Keller. Regardless of what the flavor of the board is, um, I would. Uh, I'm sure some people took off work and whatever. I would like to hear public comment before we decide that is that's still.
Oh, yeah, you. I mean, it's an action item, so you'd have to do public comment.
Okay.
I think we need to get, because we're just talking about roads, we need to talk about the whole project completely. Of this whole thing completely and get everything out there. So that they can make application accordingly. If we if we. Thank you. Okay, going back to uh discussion. I didn't want to make a comment on um on this road thing. I was looking. We always end up with this chicken egg type thing with N dot, and I don't really want to push things out to N dot for their approval. I would like to know what what's gonna happen. So that that's what we're okay with when we approve something. Do you follow me? It's like. As soon as I saw a temporary stoplight out there, I was like, okay, well, I'm not real happy with that. So I think that discussion. Has to be not in a not not in a void, not pushed onto them. We have to have a. You know, a clue or avenue of how we want to adjust traffic. So that they're aware of it. Does that make sense?
It does make sense, uh, Louis Carrillo for the record. I I would point out that this process is is hasn't been uh typical for us. We did introduce. The idea of submitting a traffic impact study for construction traffic. Uh, and therefore I think some of the timelines for N dot's review and back and forth, the traffic engineer. Uh, were kind of stalled out versus the uh statutory requirements to bring this to the planning commission and the board. So I I would certainly agree with you, Mr. Chair, uh, that we we would feel better having more information.
And we we should be driving it, right? County should be driving it, not waiting to see what they respond with.
And this isn't part of the agenda, but like today, coming out, coming out of Sierra, there was a semi and he was trying to turn right. And he couldn't turn right because there's traffic both ways. I don't know why N dot. We haven't had. The first big company that's down there. Or envy energy for that matter, add an acceleration lane. Uh, to the right, I it blows my mind.
I would imagine, sir, that if if the item were tabled and there were new traffic impact studies or access. Along Sierra Way was going to be part of a future project. Then improvements would be recommended there, and then we will be soliciting comments from N dot. As to whether or not those those improvements would be appropriate based on the updated or the new traffic impact study. That if if access were proposed there.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're on board with the county leading the process. Because I don't want to come back to this meeting and go, oh, and N dot says this, and then we throw everything back out. You know what I'm saying?
Uh, we do what we can at the staff level, sir. Uh, we did again commission a meeting with them. Uh, where we drove the process of requesting that construction T I S because they clearly stated to us in the meeting. Uh, that it was not part of their process and they would not force it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Does anybody on the board have any more concerns uh that they want to bring up besides the roads? About the project, about the.
I mean, obviously, uh, talking with the gentleman, there's with this project, there's wildlife concerns and other stuff as far as. Um, you know, the rights of those abroad with this property. I don't, I don't know how in depth we want to go on all that or. If we just, uh. You know, want to go to public comment and then go to that, I guess.
Okay, uh, I just want to make sure it's all out there for this development to know what we're what we're looking at further in the future. Uh. Just so they know, because I know I don't want to see the real characteristic changed. Uh, you know, at least visual from the highway or anything like that, so. Want to make sure that they're aware of that. Okay, uh, what I'll do is I'll just go to public comment or does the does you guys have more to?
Thank you, Ash Woods. For the record, Copia Power. Um. I just want to thank you for all your comments today. This is what we're looking for uh in this process. We want to hear feedback and. The intention is to incorporate it into uh our applications and the the design of the project. Um, that's that's exactly what we want to do is want to be partners with the county and. And with you all. Um, I think the um, just the sequencing of the process has created a little bit of a snag, but otherwise like we're fully prepared to. Um, go back to the table and hear what you all have to say in terms of where you want access and uh work with you. And uh, and of course, N dot to to get the access. Um, that makes sense for the project. So. Um, would appreciate that opportunity and uh appreciate your input today.
Okay, and then we'll bring it back to the board after we do public comment, so you have a chance to. Just to back up. I'm gonna go to public comment now.
Mr. Chair, I'm the sign in sheet over here. If anyone can please line up and then sign in um as you're waiting to speak.
Good afternoon. My name is Laurie Tom.
Wait one second, wait one second. Wanted to quiet down a little bit because everything, well, everything's on recording so that so that we can bring it back. So we try to keep the room fairly quiet. Uh, I do want to want to remind everybody it's a three minute time limit, so when your time's up, it's up. Uh, and please don't be repetitive. Uh, if you're agreeing with the person behind you. Our time is just as important as everybody else's time in the room. As long as you agree with them, just say I agree with them. If you got something new to bring, please let us know.
Good afternoon. My name is Laurie Tom. For the record, um, I would like to make a public comment about the entire project. I know that this is just a mapping change, a land use change, and I know that as a landowner, you want to have that ability to change those. Uses of your land, but I think there's a lot of questions that have not been answered, like uh beneficial water use. How those are going to change the impact of wildlife if there is an accident or an emergency that happens. And I don't believe there has been any contact with either the Walker River or Yarrington Paiute tribes in discussion with the future project, because sitting here listening, I know it's a map request change. But it sounds like the project has gone a lot farther. I think there's been a lot of other discussions around this in the planning, and it's been laid out on what this project is going to do, and we need to know more, I believe, even as just a Lion County Yarrington citizen. Not just a tribal person, what this impact is going to be for our lands. And like I said, I do respect others for being able to ask for change of use of their land, but it does impact our neighbors and the tribes are huge neighbors, and we do have huge concerns about what impacts our environment, and we will always stand for protect that. Okay? Thank you.
My name is Michelle Trevino. Was here last month. I do thank you for you guys thinking of us with the road. The trees. I ask that you think of our water, our wells. If something happens, we're without water. Which we go there first. They say there's no visual impact on people. This is theirs. I could bring this up if you want. Our property is right here. We will see the rooftops of every house. We own the Weber's old ranch house. It's on a hill. It's been there since nineteen sixty-five. And thank you again.
Good, next.
Good afternoon, Celeste Hawkins. I think I whatever happens here today, there's nobody's, I've heard nothing about a timeline of this project. From today on, it's presumably, we say five oh, you go, go for it. What's next stops along the way? How many stops are there until day one of construction, till ground breaks? And what is the starting construction? How many, how long, how long do you anticipate this construction time will take? That these roads will be impacted with concrete trucks and and dirt moving? And then is there a projected date of opening of to say, okay, this facility is is online, we're ready to go? And I'd like to have some of those answers. I think that would help everybody here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Melissa Skid, I'm here. Well, things have happened, so I'm glad that some of this stuff is getting addressed, but the impact of this size of a project, so just talking about the size of this project. If you approve the change, the master plan change, even if this one fell apart, you've now approved that size of a project to be allowed in there. So the impact is not gonna change if you approve that. Ninety-five A cannot handle any more of this stuff. We have had such an impact with the mines go, the traffic going up and down Campbell because of the mines and the expansions with the dairies. The dirt trucks are up and down all day long from the Sierra project. Dumping on the road, you've now got traffic backed up for God knows how far. What about emergencies during that time? Ninety-five A is the only access up and down. So something really needs to be addressed. If we want to grow, you talk about jobs coming in. If you're going to continue to approve projects, we need to address the roads first. Because you're going to have additional emergency problems if we keep jamming more and more trucks, the trucks and traffic and everything else. The impact study hours were obviously wrong, because if you are on that anywhere near that road. I'm sorry, the tractors start real early and start the slow run of the trucks and the traffic and everything else. So it's constant up and down. Then they showed the different intersections, and again, they failed to show Campbell Lane and the dangers involved with Campbell Lane. They, the new impact with the dirt trucks. You've got all these trucks hauling bends down the ninety-five slamming on their horns to try and keep people from pulling out of Campbell Lane. Because they're traveling at, you know, sixty miles an hour or whatever there. And if somebody tries to pull out of there, they can't. There's too much weight. They cannot slow down fast enough. So they're slamming on their horns to try to avoid. I get what they're doing. But we can't increase. Ninety-five A just can't handle it. We need more. Like you said, acceleration lanes at the different intersections, something. We need major changes to ninety-five A before we keep allowing more. Okay.
Next.
All right. My name's Robert Berry. I live on eighty-five Penrose Lane. And I worked twenty years in the Navy, fifteen years peace officer. I've done nothing but scenarios my whole entire life. Four carriers, one battleship. Firefighting is my life. Okay, so Moss Landing, you had a major fire. Forty-four hours, they had to let it burn. Moss Landing has seventy percent of the lettuce growing in the United States. Fifty-seven percent of the celery growing in the United States. And forty-eighty percent of the broccoli. They done garlic testing before and after the fire. Add a five hundred increase of heavy metals in all the garlic that was tested. They put a battery plant out there, has a fire. Where does the wind come from? North, south, east, west? You got this valley, three, two miles, twenty-five miles long. You have a fire, it's gonna knock everybody out. Perry and Sons, all the farmers, you need a real farmer out here that's gonna be able to sell hay. They're not. Perry and Sons, they're organic, they're done. You got Weber Lake to the east. It's going to contaminate our water. You've got Yarrington, not Yarrington, but Silver Springs, St. Paul. Same thing. You've got Smith Valley to the west. What are you guys thinking about proving something like this? You're not only going to destroy the community, you're going to kill people. Cancer, heavy metals in the blood. Their livelihood, their retirement. Are you farmers? You're not.
Thank you. Next.
Yeah, San Angelo. Yeah, I live out there in those roads. You know, everybody out there checks their mail on this road. So now you're gonna put these construction vehicles out there? What are they gonna do? Run everybody over while they're checking their mail? Not to mention, you can't even can't even turn on that street. Today, you can't go out there and turn down that street without a semi loaded with rock passing you in the left-hand lane. Because, oh, God, they don't want to slow down because you're making a turd. So there hasn't been any traffic studies. Because that's all day long. It's not just in a few hours out of the day. And, you know, then you're gonna turn all these trucks down this road where people are checking their mail. And then you got Brian. I know he wants the deal to go through himself. But, you know, he's got equipment out there running up and down those roads, too. He might not like fighting his stuff in with that traffic. None of us like any of those trucks going down that road. You got Sierra Highway, and you got Miller Lane. What's wrong with those? There's no houses on either one of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Thank you for letting me speak at the podium and congratulations on your election as county commissioners. The last time I was here, I forgot to. I didn't know you were a newly elected board, so congratulations on that. I'm Johanna M., and I just want to say that I do oppose any development from agriculture to whatever their master plan changes for commercial because of the fact that the state of Nevada has already designated water quality or water designations, and the beneficial use out here is for agriculture. So I just want to to reinforce that as well as, you know, I brought up treaties before and the U.S. Constitution supremacy clause says all treaties made shall be the supreme law of the land, and every judge is and every state should be bound by that. And also, as far as the water quality goes, we already have a superfund site or proposed superfund site with Anaconda Copper Mine Site, which adds additional impaired waters to the the Walker River. The Walker River isn't necessarily designated as a you know, irrigation canal, but there we do have Campbell Canal and Wabaska Drain in that area, and that's partly been impacted by the Anaconda Copper Mine Site. So to add more injury from development would would cause more poor water quality, and you do have a section three oh three oh five B and a three oh three D impaired waters list for the state of Nevada that, you know, we have E. coli and bacteria in our water sometimes. And sometimes it's from development. And I just want to reinforce that the tribes here in Yarrington tribal members and the tribes in Walker River are impacted by it. Our tribal members here are a part of the Walker River Irrigation District by patent one, one, five, one, six, which says we have a hundred and forty, well, one thousand forty shares of stock in the Campbell Canal Company, which is a Nevada corporation. And as an individual, I you Yarrington Paiute tribal member, I I am opposed to any further development of these lands because of the water quality as well as that they need to go through the process correctly. You know, and talk to the tribes as well. We're still here. We still exist. And you know, we're we're not opposed to development, but we would like to be a part of it as well. And I would like to say that the third amendments to the Clean Water Act recognize Indian tribes as co-trustees of the environment.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Board Members. I'm Jim Snyder, representing Snyder Lifestyle Company, and I'm in favor of this project. Given the relatively plain nature of the industries involved and the economic benefits to the county and the community and the needs of the county and the community. I think it only makes sense to approve this. Granted, it does appear the traffic issues need to be addressed. Beyond that, I'm in favor of the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead. If there anybody else in the room, get in line, because as soon as that line's done, I'm gonna go to online and I'll shut the room down.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. My name's Dave Snyder. I grew up in the valley, longtime resident. I want to go on record in favor of this project. Been a longtime resident. I saw what happened when Anaconda died. I've seen what's happened in this community as it slowly slides into a ghost town status, quite frankly. I think the opportunity for good jobs in this community and for the county to have solid businesses is unparalleled. The demand for data processing, the demand for energy is insatiable. If this project does not happen here, it will happen in part most likely Mineral County. Then we'll be left with something like USA Parkway, where all of the tax revenue from the businesses accrued to Story County, yet all the residences or all the employees live in Lion County, so we have to underwrite the fire, the law enforcement, the schools, all the expenses, and we accrue none of the benefits. Now, for those that live out there, I am very empathetic to the traffic issues, and I understand that there needs to be some mitigation. However, I also live in an area where in during onion harvest, tens of thousands of trucks thunder by my house every day. I want to know how much time and consideration this board has had to spend on onion trucks. Thanks for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Hey. Let's not have comments back and forth, please.
Hello, my name is James Foster. I live on one thirty Penrose Lane, probably the closest to this project. I have five children. I understand progress and getting in the way thereof gets you ran over pretty quick. But consideration must be taken into the fact that the presentation alone could be done better by a sixth grader. That their concept is not a plan. Right? Your planning should involve the traffic.
Please.
Or environmental.
Please talk to them.
Absolutely. It's an insult to everybody in the room. Right? They teach better stuff at kindergarten than they presented. The facts with which they're based were not supported by any other entity other than their own studies, correct? We did not do anything about it. This is the first time I was made aware. Actually, the last month was the first time I was made aware of it. I'm the closest one to this project. But there are benefits with companies coming in. And I simply ask that a presentation of the effects of the property values of the existing residents be made. Let us know what's going to happen to our property's value, because that directly affects us. A presentation that designs that defines the limits, the effects of the noise, the light, the sound, and the environmental solutions that will inflict the residents and the wildlife. And let us see the viable plan to mitigate these intrusive and harmful byproducts of the project. These are minimum steps that should be made before an approval is made on the change of land type, because once that has been made, you have surrendered power and endued them with power. And every time through every step, the resident loses power. Right? We just want to, we we move that for a specific reason. To be rural, to be through agricultural, to keep our children away from the industrial, away from heavy traffic. And this is infecting. This is affecting it in any way. Now, I don't disagree with projects being made, betterments. How will this affect our power? At the end, what's the power bill gonna be? Because once demand is put on a project or a product, the rates go up. Right? When the just from the movement of earth, you have a wild reserve right next to it. That alone, I didn't see a plan for. And I know the bigger plan, well.
Time's up. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Chair, my name's Mike Trevino. I reside at one twenty-five Penrose. I spoke last month very specifically about the infrastructure of the fire service, being able to handle certain things that might become with a fire in this. I'm retired thirty-four years from Washoe County as battalion chief, captain, worked through the ranks. Kind of going into a personal note on this thing. After retiring from the fires, looking back, we watched Washoe County start to develop certain things and some of the impacts and everything else that were beginning to happen. Was born at Saint Mary's, been here my whole entire life. As I saw Washoe County start to develop more and more of these things, and they're starting to come closer and closer to us, we thought we would try and find a place that we wanted to live that wasn't going to have this environmental impacts that this is going to have. The very house that we bought is three hundred and sixty feet above this. We're gonna have four point six million roof line of our backyard. That's what this is gonna look at. And I know you guys are saying, well, this is just one person, but it's about the other effects. I fought fires for thirty-four years. And in the last ten years, I was on four different fires that were exactly these battery storage type facilities that they're still cleaning up and the impact that they had on the groundwater and everything else. You guys can't forget Anaconda. You guys can't forget Anaconda. This is on that side of the valley. If you have an impact of fire, then this contaminates this side. Everybody on that side of the valley is still getting bottled water under contractual agreement because of that whole thing. And that's how much of an impact that this would have on this place if we had a fire here. Now you're talking about putting in, you guys are talking about a gate up for the fire service. Fire service isn't even gonna respond to this. They're gonna just evacuate miles around this place. You yourself said you were in Florida and you came back to Nevada because how much you love it. Because you love your property, because you love being here.
Correct.
Okay, right? At the beginning of this very meeting, there was a prayer that said protect our lands in Washoe County. And that's your guys' jobs and that's what you guys need to do here today. You guys need to let not let this thing go forward. Part of USA Parkway is in Lion County. So yes, they should be building there. There is a part of the USA Parkway that's in Lion County. It's not Story County. It's completely. Yes, it started there, but it spills over into Lion County. There are plenty of. Plenty of property for this where that USA Parkway, where that whole Giga Center belongs. Okay, thank you. I'm very opposed to this, so appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, my name's Carolyn Elmer. I live out of Penrose Lane. And I bought out there with the sole purpose of finishing my retirement years out there in a country environment. Um and now it's in jeopardy. Uh value of my property, I don't know what it's gonna be worth here in another few years. And the other thing is environmental studies, I haven't seen any. What is it gonna do to the river? What is it gonna do to the underground water? I'd like to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, uh Brian Messini. I had one of my neighbors come by and say, hey, Brian, you're a good guy, but I don't know if the rest of them feel that way today. Look, I get it. I I expressed to this board. That when the substation came in, that we didn't like the traffic either. And I don't think it was mitigated. I don't think it was taken care of. And I kind of felt the same way, just. You know, through the grapevine about the Southern project. We've tried to do this right. I do understand the concerns of all the neighbors about Penrose Lane. I in fact did suggest about three weeks ago. That it should come off Sierra Power Way and they should spend their money fixing it, which the power company should have got involved with to begin with. If you're just against the project, then then that's different. Our town has suffered since Anaconda did leave. We've never cleaned it up. There's messes everywhere. The town needs revenue. There's chances of the, very good chance of the golf course opening back up, new ball fields. Restaurants and things happening, and then of course the jobs. As far as property values, I would suggest, and I don't know everything, in fact, I probably don't know damn much, but I would suggest they'll go up. Um not that he wants to sell. I love the rural community, lived here since fifty-three when I was born. My family loves it here. Um we think that this is an opportunity. Because historically, no one would come to Yarrington to build. They've come all around us. And so listening to the city, everyone's in financial trouble. So that's how this got started. I didn't ask for it. I didn't ask for the substation. We did not know. I think when people don't know, we don't have a Mason Valley News, et cetera, et cetera now. So it's like me, I don't know what's going on. But I do know this, that. You can be against things just to be against. On the other hand, someone reasonable looks at the situation. It is that this town needs jobs, it needs revenue. And we have just, and I don't want to use the word, so I gotta be careful here. We have slowly gone downhill. Nothing's happened at the high school. Nothing's happened at any of the schools. My point being, there should be a way to make this happen. I know it's a big project. Once again, wow, who who could ever believe it? We're farmers. One last thing, the ground out there is extraordinarily marginal. It does not work for farming. In fact, a lot of it is fouled right now. We are not going to impact the water. I can't tell you what happens underground, but I can tell you this, and I said it before. Niffworth and the state are buying the water rights as we speak. So the alternative is to sell water rights. I'd rather not do that. And I'm not, of course, not threatening either. I'm just telling you that that is there a way to make this work? Do great companies. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Cindy Black and I live at ninety-five Penrose Lane. And I just really want to know why this. Project is perfect at the end of our road when it is surrounded by Mason Valley Wildlife. It has a hatchery on Lux Lane. And you were all were agricultural and rural. I don't get when you have the whole state of Nevada. Other than they do have to build fifty miles from the the nearest station, which is Switch. And if you map it out, it is exactly fifty miles at the end of our road for this storage, which. Come on, if it's the Messinis who want the fucking money, then let them go to Valley Vista at the other end of town. Where the the only people there is their employees. They have plenty of land there that they could do that. Thank you.
Is this the last one?
Jimmy Shamble. I'm. I'm initially I'm opposed to this, but. You know, if it has to come, then they definitely, you need to make them come off of Sierra Way. You also need to make them improve Sierra Way to handle the traffic. Uh my other question is, how many jobs when it's all done, not construction jobs? How many jobs when it's all done? Will there really be? And will they really be jobs from people from Yarrington? We saw this with Nevada Copper. They promised all the jobs would be local jobs. They weren't. Very few of them were. You know, so, you know, if this is gonna be done. One, I don't know, you can't make them be local jobs, but you're gonna see people commuting from Fallon, Friendly, Dayton to come to work here. And how many jobs does a data center employ? Does anybody know? I don't, but I hear there's not a whole lot once it's done. And the traffic on ninety-five A is something has to be done with that. That's a death alley all the way to at least Silver Springs. But I hate to see ag ground come out of production. But you know, when you can get twelve thousand dollars an acre foot for your water, you know, I guess money talks.
Thank you. Next.
My name is Donovan Foley. Um I'm a sixth generation from around these parts. I own a house on Sixth Furlane, just on the other side of the highway, same street though. Um I we bought the house we did from my grandparents and my step-great-grandfather owned it before us. And we bought over there for a reason. I looked at Churchill County when we were looking to buy a house and move out from graduating from college, going to university. We have three beautiful children and a beautiful wife and our. Reason for moving to that house is to be across the street from my grandparents' house. And to enjoy the agricultural views. Including the night sky at night, you know, it's wonderful being able to see the the Milky Way. And I know how bad light pollution affects stuff like that. Because I've lived in other states and bigger cities and stuff, not even huge cities, not like Vegas or something, but. I mean, you can see light pollution at night from Reno from Yarrington already enough, and that sucks. For all of us that are wanting to live out there, rural, away from everything that's going on. Another thing is with the traffic. It's already bad enough when I go to turn left heading northbound. To go home, half the time people aren't paying attention already ever since USA Parkway was put in. They're coming up behind me too hot and. Half the time I'm, you know, left turn signal's on, I turn flip it on the right turn signal and pull over in the restaurant real quick just so I can flip a Uwe. And then cross the highway when it's safe to do so. So the traffic impact is already considerable amount. On top of that, like the other gentleman said, I'm concerned with uh. It doesn't sound like there's a whole lot of jobs that are gonna be available for people that are already currently in Yarrington or from Yarrington. Totally support tax revenues for the county. Um but I just don't see this as a feasible thing, a sandwich, something like this in between hunting land. Agricultural land and residential land surrounding the whole entire place. So that's just my two sons. Thank you.
Thank you. So one last time for the people in the room before I close, I would comment in the room. Talk to you, you're done. You know, you're done. This is for people that didn't get their chance to talk. Okay, we're closing the top comment in the room. I'm gonna go online and start off with Nick Nick Beaton.
Good morning Commissioners, Nick Beaton, longtime local resident and new Yarrington City Councilman for the record. Um I just wanted to say ditto to much of what David Snyder had to say. And I would encourage that the board please vote in a manner that allows the county and the company to continue working together quickly. To address the concerns that were brought up today. I think the traffic reroute is is absolutely more than fair and a great idea. And I think that a good solution can be brought here to bring uh copia power to the valley. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Hillary Dashell. Hopefully.
Um yeah, Hillary Dashell here. Um I am a resident that lives uh down the road from this project. Um I am in favor of smart economic development, so I'm not opposed to this project. I do question the location. Um the land is surrounded, as some have said, by uh residents and wildlife. Uh I think that um the traffic is serious, but. In terms of approving the switch from ag to commercial, I do think that um it is important that the studies be done first. Not just the traffic studies. The water table is a serious concern. All of the houses out there are on wells. And um we were impacted by Anaconda. Um we're kind of in between the two. If this one were to go forward, um the water quality is um not healthy. Um and the bottled water is not a pleasant solution either, given the plastic. Um concerns that have come to light recently and health concerns. Um so again, I'm not, I'm I'm not opposed to economic development. I do not want to see Yarrington. Um turn into a ghost town. I don't think anyone really does. I think what we want is we want for our concerns to be addressed appropriately ahead of time before the change takes place from ag to commercial. Is this really the best location? Um I understand that it's a it's a location that has a lot of land attached to it, but there are other areas in surrounding surrounding Yarrington that would be appropriate. Um those are my my deepest concerns. The water is um a massive concern. The water table, it's not clear that it can handle additional usage. Um I understand that the there are there are already issues with how much water we have available. How much is available on a regular basis? Um as a a user of the um. Irrigation system. Um we can't really handle much more in terms of. The it there's nothing that says that this water table can handle the amount of water that may be drawn as a result of this project. So I I just think that studies first are important, moving forward quickly. Might sound appealing. I understand that the money is is definitely appealing. But making sure that you're doing the best for everyone involved and. Um data centers do not bring in jobs. Um that has been proven. They are um very uh efficient in terms of not bringing in jobs. So if there are jobs to be had, it does not clear that they're gonna be hearing to jobs. But in any case, if it's a tax base that you want to increase. I think looking at areas that would be appropriate, um more appropriate would be um something that should be considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Carrie Rockford.
Yes, thank you. Um we should all know that these data centers require a massive. Amount of non-recyclable water to uh keep the computers cool. To um operate those things. Um in other states, wells, surrounding wells have dried up. Um in houses that surrounded the uh data centers themselves. And I'm wondering, when will the water impact be assessed, discussed and opened for the public? Because um that is a huge concern in this um area here. And I am a water rights holder and I don't want my well to go dry. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Last chance online. Have a comment. Okay, seeing that, we'll bring it back to the board. I don't know if the applicant wants to address any of that or just. What is the applicant? Um I have one comment while she's coming up.
Um I would appreciate it um that attacks on county staff during for just doing their job, I feel is unacceptable. I signed up for this. You can come after me. Alright, uh so your frustrations, I'll listen to, I promise you that, but. Attacking somebody for a presentation for a zoning change, uh. Those types of things, I don't think we should allow. Um and uh so again, I signed up for this, please. Show me your frustrations, yell at me, cuss, whatever you gotta do. Um there's no decision been made, but the county has a responsibility when these are brought forward. These projects are brought forward. We don't get a arbitrarily say absolutely not, whatever. It's got to go through the process. And that's where we're at right now. So please, don't attack county staff. Uh Lewis, you did a great job. And uh you put a lot of time and effort into this, so I want to thank you for that.
Any more comment? You have anything to add?
Ashwoods, for the record, um we have heard all of the the comments today and um. We didn't get to Copia Power's presentation, but we we did address those in that presentation, so we're happy to. Um to speak to that if you would like. Um but I will say at this stage of the process, the way that the county code is set up. Has kind of created a lot of um the crosswires that that we're kind of hearing today. Things like environmental studies that would be required by the next phase of the process. Um uh a more in-depth traffic studies and coordination. Coordination with the county um on-site design and having more design um than, you know, just what's preliminary up here. This is a very, very early stage. Um and so we're trying to follow the county process and the the county process at this point just. Asked for what we've, you know, what we've provided. Um we're fully planning to provide all of the the environmental studies and other. Um coordination in the next step of the process as the county dictates. Um I just want to make that clear. Uh we we realized. There's barely any any information today, but it's because the specific plan is not supposed to be about the project. It's supposed to be about the zone change. Um or the the master plan amendment rather. So that's just, want to make that clear that we're very, we take this very seriously. Um environmental issues are very serious to us. The concerns of the public um are very serious to us and that. That's all something that we plan to address. Uh we've planned to hold community meetings and uh. And hear the the voices of the folks in this room more than just today in the process of developing this project, so. Just want to make that clear. Um in terms of today and the decision at hand. Um it is the specific plan decision, which really is, you know, it's just supposed to be a change um to the master plan. For land use designation, but I do hear um the concerns surrounding. Um the information, the specific plan not being sufficient to um fully address the traffic. Uh concerns. Uh we definitely hear that and um I think just by way of process. That's kind of where we are at right now. Uh we're fully prepared to work with the county and end up to figure out whatever. Traffic solutions make sense. Um we want people to be safe. We want traffic to not be a headache for everyone. Um you know, throughout construction of the project, so. Uh what I would like to do and like like to request from you at this point is to to table this uh vote. And then we can come back with more information. We'll amend our specific plan application and include. Um that traffic information in there so that it's clear that Penrose Lane isn't. Um you know, the be all and all of our our impact um or in our impact analysis, so. Um we would like to table this at this time and we'll amend and. um, we would like to table this at this time and we'll amend and uh address your concerns and then come back and discuss this at a a later meeting.
Thank you. Thank you for uh showing up. Uh, thank everybody in the room for showing up. This is the process. This is how we get the the information out to to everybody so we can come to a conclusion, good or bad. It's, we've got to work through the process. With what your comments, uh, I'd entertain a motion from the board unless you guys got more comments.
I move that we table item fifteen C.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Hendricks, second by Commissioner Hawkeye. Those in favor, say aye. And table motion passes five zero. We'll see you when you come back. And again, thank you everybody for showing up and giving us comment. In session sixteen A for possible action, approve five-year master plan for the enhancement improvement of the telephone system for reporting notices in Lyon County and oversee the money allocated for that purpose. Mr. Foley.
Chair Keller, um, real quick, I just want to note that um Commissioner Casinelli is not on Zoom anymore.
Okay, Commissioner Casinelli is not on Zoom.
At twelve fifty-five.
At twelve fifty-five. Mr. Foley.
Josh Foley, Lyon County Council, for the record. So the telephone surcharge committee, that again is required by state law. They went through, the plan's very similar to last year. It's just a matter of uh how many radios or uh handheld and mobiles and those type of things that they need. Otherwise, it's very similar. I'm here to answer any questions if you have them. But that's the proposal for it.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Foley?
Nope.
Any public comment?
I'll I'll make a comment. I'll make nowhere to place this one, so we'll get done quickly, didn't you?
And thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Okay, we're still going to public comment. Nothing in the room, nothing online. Come back for to vote for action.
Um, Chairman Carr, I make a motion to approve five-year match plan for the enhancement of or improvement of the telephone system for reporting in agencies in Lyon County and overseeing money allocated for that purpose.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Jackson, second by Commissioner Hendricks. Those in favor, say aye. Motion passes four to zero. Seventeen A. Clerk Treasurer, for possible action. Approved clerk treasurer to purchase election equipment and necessary supplies and fixtures in the amount of one hundred and sixteen thousand, six hundred sixty-five dollars and fifty cents required to meet the new EIC requirements implemented due to the President's Executive Order signed March twenty-fifth twenty twenty-five, titled preserving and protecting the integrity of American elections. Request to be funded from a budget transfer from the general fund contingency.
Stacy Lindbergh, uh, Lyon County Clerk Treasurer. Um, I had done a presentation um a couple of weeks ago. Um, I didn't know if you guys had any more questions or anything, but um I went ahead with, um, I didn't have any other feedback or or get anything else in other than the quotes. And I feel this is probably the the best way to go for us at this time. If we did, if we wait, I could be in a position of not being in compliance if if it does go through. Um, I do need two to three months for ordering and training. So um that's why I'm asking for all the the supplies and the equipment that I would need to run the primary in June with the um new equipment.
Do you have any comments or questions from the board? I I do have one. Uh, you said the President's Executive Order signed March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, I believe that said in there, it didn't direct you to do that. It said should.
Um, from my direction, that's why I waited so long, is pretty much that. They didn't know if the E, if the election administration for the federal government was going to enforce it. In the meantime, we have heard from the Secretary of State that they do plan on enforcing it. Um, and it is recommended by the state for me to move forward. I'm the only county that hasn't.
Okay, I just bring that to attention. So it's it's the, what part of the state is recommending it?
The Secretary of State is recommending um moving toward it now. Um, being, like I said, being the only county and and not having any um decisiveness, whether they are going to implement it or not. They were saying that the election, um, election, EIC, I'm sorry, I can't remember what it stands for. Um, it's the federal uh level enforcement for elections. Um, I believe that the acronym is EIC. I apologize, I can't remember what it stands for right now. Election Infrastructure Commission. Thank you. Uh, they are also saying that um they are going to be enforcing that role, so.
Okay, well, I just want to make sure credit goes to the people that are actually making you do this. So to me, that's Secretary of State, not President of the United States. Uh, do we have any questions or comments? Any public comment? Seeing none in the room, none online. We entertain a motion.
Move to approve clerk treasurer to purchase election equipment and necessary supplies and fixtures in the amount of one hundred and sixteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars and fifty cents required to meet the new EIC requirements implemented due to the President's Executive Order signed March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, titled preserving and protecting the integrity of American elections. Request to be funded from general fund contingency.
And I'll second that. Oh, great. I'm just trying to get my name on in a minute somehow. Motion by Commissioner Hendricks, second by Commissioner Keller. Those in favor, say aye. Alright, motion passes four zero.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation and your project update from the engineering.
Afternoon, uh, Kishore Panda, I'll give this engineer for the record. Uh, I'll give the project status update for the second quarter of the year. Uh, at this point, all the projects are going well as per plan. So I'll probably skip the slides. I'll go to the last one, which is the rolling a plant expansion project. Uh, we have been reporting some sort of issue with the delivery and construction delay with this project. So at this point, we are expecting about five months delay and uh our next agenda item basically going to present a change order requested by the contractor and our review, uh, and some negotiation with the cost also. So those details is coming. But as far as the project status update, I think we are going well. And uh if there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, I just brought it up on the screen, so I didn't know if he had something to say.
Well, I wanted to make it short so that uh we're kind of going late maybe in the board schedule, so.
Okay, so you have a a five-minute delay coming?
Yeah, the next agenda item will discuss all those things.
So that was presentation only, so we'll go on to eighteen B for possible action, approved change order number one. For the rolling a wastewater treatment plant phase four expansion project with resource development company to extend the contract duration by one hundred and fifty-two days due to material supply delays and evaluation of some process conditions during construction.
Good afternoon Commissioners, Sean Sinclair, interim director for the record. Now, I just want to make a couple notes, as you described in the subject. Uh, change order number one, so this is a request. It's just a time extension request only. Um, as a part of this request, the contractor has agreed to provide a credit of sixty-eight thousand, six hundred ninety-two dollars to the county to offset additional costs incurred for, incurred, including construction administration inspections, engineering services um resulting from extending this contract by a total of a hundred and fifty-two days. Uh, that we kind of got to this point, there's some, some of the delays were through the submittal process and a delay with receiving some of the equipment that's needed to um keep the construction on track. Um, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may ask.
Any questions or comments, Mr. Jackson?
Is this causing you and your department serious heartburn and trouble, or is it something that we can roll with?
It's something we can continue on with. We're gonna have to.
So you saved the sixty thousand dollars?
Working with our engineering team and the the contractor and the county manager, every kind of collaborative, so yes.
More questions or comments? For the public comment? Seeing none in the room, seeing none online. Bring it back to the board for the motion.
Move to approve a change order number one for the rolling a wastewater treatment plant phase for expansion project with resource development company to extend the contract duration by one hundred and fifty-two days to material due to material supply delays and evaluation of some process conditions during construction.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Hendricks, second by My microphone's off. Motion by Commissioner Hendricks, second by Commissioner Hawkeye. Those in favor, say aye. Motion passes four zero. Advisory board for possible action, approve a change in Nineteen A's poll. Oh, sorry. I got it circled. I forgot why I circled it. Twenty, District Attorney. Twenty-eight for possible action, approve a case management system agreement with Pine Technologies for District Attorney's Office to be funded from the approved fiscal year twenty-six budget.
Uh, thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioner Stephen Rye, District Attorney. Uh, the DA's office wants to change the case management system that we're presently using to this new system. Uh, for the reasons that we think it'll be better suited to what we do, it's more directed towards uh prosecution, case prosecution. It will give us better data and tracking of our cases, better able to manage the cases. And will assist the office, the attorneys, as well as the staff. It will also allow us to track our other cases. Uh, civil and uh child dependency, child protection, juvenile cases, all those things in the system. Uh, it's, as I said, it's directed towards uh our functions specifically. The system we're on now is not directed just towards government functions. It's more of a system for private law firms. And so this would be a step in the right direction. As far as the budget, we believe there will be some budget savings with this new system. Although we won't know for sure for a couple of years, um, both in staff time and in the cost of the system. But in any event, it is within the existing budget that you approved.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Wright? Seeing none, any public comment?
Nothing online. I make a motion to approve a case management system agreement with Pine Technologies for the District Attorney's Office to be funded from the approved fiscal year twenty-six budget.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Jackson, second by Commissioner Hawkeye. Those in favor, say aye. Motion passes four zero.
Thank you.
A for possible action. Discussion and possible directions of the county manager about the possibility of appointing a planning commission member to serve on the NACO Natural Resources and Lands Committee for Lyon County and create an appointment process.
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager, for the record. Um, so the idea for having one of our planning commissioners sit on the um, NACO Natural Resources and Lands Committee was actually Commissioner Hendricks. She had approached me about it and um, I thought it sounded like a pretty good idea. Um, NACO uh was on board with the idea as well, but realized that we needed to get this board's approval to make sure that that is something that that the commission would like. Um, that person would be obviously sitting on that uh committee in addition to Commissioner Hendricks or whoever is appointed by the board to that spot. Uh, is there three?
I sit on that board with her right now, so this would be three on that board.
Yes, this would be three on that board. Um, and so um really, just again, this item is to determine, one, to you know, that this board does in fact want to move forward with that. And two, um to kind of create an appointment process, my recommendation would be to have the planning commission recommend somebody from their uh, from the commission and then have the board appoint that person um to that, to that committee. Um, so I I think it's it's pretty straightforward. It seems like a good idea and it gets the planning commission more involved in those types of issues. And so just uh looking for the board's input.
For clarification, this is for the Nevada Association of County.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendricks.
The reason I brought brought this board is with all of the solar projects and probably now geothermal. I felt like it would be really important for at least one member of that board to really have some knowledge on what's going on.
Any other comments? So you're looking for us right now to approve one person and then go through a process?
No, no.
Appointment process, okay.
Yeah, yeah. So again, just looking for direction to make sure that the board uh does want to appoint somebody to that. And then uh let me know what what process you want to use and then uh, we can start that process.
Commissioner Keller, the question I have is if are you looking for just one person then, or you're gonna have, like, are there appointments? Whoever on the planning commission would be interested would come here and we would look at their request to be on that board.
Um, the process wise, I mean, that that's up to this board as to what you would like to do. Um, again, I mean, my recommendation would probably to have the planning commission make a recommendation and then we would agendaize it and have this board approve that recommendation, but we can certainly have it where we receive applicants from the planning commission. I just but then that 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 commission wouldn't really necessarily have a say in who from their commission gets.
I'm really not liking boards appoint there. I'd rather we did it. So application could come to us or interest, I guess, would be more of a if they showed interest in being on that board, bring that to us.
I think um Chair Keller, if I may, um, I think that maybe a combination thereof, if there's only one person that's interested on the planning commission, that one person could come forward and then we would either agree or disagree with that. If there was more than one interested in it, then I think we go with what Commissioner Keller is saying. Um, rather than the planning commission decide, we decide. But if there's only one interested, so is that a combination thereof? I'm not sure.
Well, I I think that would be everybody interested, because if only one comes, we could decide if a bunch.
Right.
And and I look at it as appointments to any other board. You know, if we have one person, we got one space, we do it. If we've got three people, we kind of look at the record and what they want to do and their background. So I I I think we're kind of saying the same thing. You know, one person wants it, they're probably gonna get it. Ten want it, or there's not ten. If all seven want it, then we'll have to call it down.
And and I also, I'm not And and I also, I'm not going to just approve if one person comes. I'm not necessarily going to say that person is the one I want because. This is really an important matter and I want someone that's qualified to be there or else we'll just pick go out. We don't need to put someone from the planning. We can go somewhere else that's highly qualified to get more information that could report to the planning. So.
Is that enough direction?
I think I'm gonna need a motion on this.
Make a motion to do what we told you.
Um I'll try and take a stab at it. We need public comment first though, right?
Is there any public comment?
I'll sign that one stuff. That's listen A from Wellington. Um thank you. Uh I I just want to. Go back a little bit. You talked about actually forming a public plans committee that was going to be separate from the planning commission. I. I understand that. I also understand doing another full committee with multiple members is difficult. So I think this is is a great idea, but I would suggest, I think Commissioner Hockaday may have just said it. That that maybe there's people outside the planning commission, maybe a standalone appointment. Um I don't know the backgrounds of everybody on the planning commission, but I know in some of the work we've been doing in Smith, we've run into community members. Uh who actually have a background in public lands, background in natural resources, background having worked in a governor, the governor's office at one point, previous previous governor. Uh who have been waiting for the formation of the public lands committee to apply for it. And some, you know, people have been consultants, have even worked with some of the uh companies you use to do work for the county. So I would like to take a more broader approach that it become a a standalone, that you open it up and not not just be. Current planning commissioner. So the people who have kind of been waiting for this that have an interest and the importance of the public, what's happening in the public plans. Could at least have the opportunity to come forward and let you know about their background and and how willing they would be to accept that sort of appointment. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
And just sorry, the uh this is just, this is just putting someone on from the planning commission onto that. Board has nothing to do with the makeup of a new board. That's a different different topic. That I think you're working on.
Andrew Haskin, Lion County Manager. So I actually do have a draft of an ordinance written to create a separate uh um public plans advisory board. And I it it's almost ready to bring forward. There was a couple tweaks that I needed to make. Um you know, at that time, we could decide. You know, have another item and decide if it makes more sense for for that board to have that that seat. I don't know. I don't mean to complicate things. But I, you know, I mean, I do agree that right now the planning commission is that board. Um and um. You know, I I do think that they are addressing issues. Um I'm not sure that it. But I I hear the public comment, but I'm not sure that um because they're trying to advise folks that are um actually. Or because it's trying to get more information for the folks that are actually making those decisions. I don't know. Um if you would necessarily want to have a member of the public, but that's a policy decision that the board could certainly make.
Yep, but that what's before us right now is just the one from the plan.
Sure, yeah.
So so that's that's one we're addressing. I think we were addressing toward a certain direction. Is there any more public comment? Seeing none in the room, seeing none online. Commissioner Hendricks, I think you.
Yeah, I move that we um go through the process of planning uh appointing a planning commissioner to serve. On the Nevada Association of Counties Natural Resources uh and. Public Lands and Natural Resources Board and that any of any of, I think the process should be that any of them that are interested can. Provide an application to us and we'll make the decision.
And I don't know about an application. Just that motion's before us, so keep that in mind, but I just want to make a comment. He said application. I don't know if there's an application or if we're just soliciting a a letter of interest, in which case they could tell us that they're interested.
That that could be considered the application though, isn't it?
I mean, it's not an official application. I don't think we have an application.
Well, if they're submitting it to us, though, it's.
In other direction.
Yeah.
Is that clear enough? An application or letter of interest?
Yes, I think that that's perfect.
I'll second it. Those in favor say aye. Motion passes four to zero. For possible twenty-one B, proposal action review and approve the proposed changes and updates to the system advisory handbook and the citizen advisory bylaws.
Andrew Haskin, Lion County Manager, and I I forgot to my notes in my office, but I can go by memory. So um I had brought this back uh to the board a couple of months ago. The revisions that had been requested and uh the staff recommended changes. There was one concern about residency in the bylaws. Um as far as um making sure that the um the person actually lived in Lion County, so we made some additional changes to. That section, which I think addressed those uh those concerns. Um and so we're bringing it back for for your consideration.
Any questions or comments? Any public comment? Seeing none in the room, seeing none online, bring it back to the board for motion.
Move to approve the proposed changes and updates to the citizens advisory handbook. And citizen advisory bylaws uh with staff recommended revisions.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hendricks, second by Commissioner Jacobson. Those in favor say aye. Brings us to agenda requests. On a reading. Administrative policies and procedures one oh five, a commissioner member or elected appointed department head may request an item. Be considered for on a future agenda leader by making oral request at a county commission meeting or submitting the request in writing to the county manager. At least thirty days prior to the meeting for which the item is requested to be placed on the agenda. Do we have any agenda requests? Mr. Jacobson.
Uh thank you, Chair. Um I would like to request that uh. And I have contact information, but to get a presentation from Mark Four Capital um regarding um. Plans and and uh happenings going on in the northeast corner of Lion County.
Any other agenda request? None at this time. Any comments? We'll start to the right this time. Mr. Hockaday. Ah, no comments. I'm good for the day. Mr. Hendricks. Commissioner Jacobson.
I appreciate uh people showing up and sharing their frustrations and their. Thoughts and support for whatever was brought before this board. It's always good to have people here exercising their right.
And that brings that to an end. Public participation. Is there any more public participation in the room? Any online? Hey, we'll go back. Uh do we have any? Do we have a closed session?
Yes, sir.
Lego meetings adjourned to one twenty-two. We're going to move into closed session.